Hey, Jeff.
Good.
Good, how are you? Jeffrey?
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
You look like you're in jail. Lawson.
Hey, Lawson.
Is it snowing down your neck of the woods?
It's chilly out there.
It's not snowing though.
I actually put a sweatshirt on, but I took it off because of this.
Yeah.
I think you'll have to recuse yourself for a minute, see if I can. Because you recuse from all that anyway.
Is it set? I'm a little fogged up here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Folks all ready?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll call the Tremont Pining Board meeting of September 21st order at 6 o'clock. Role called. We have Lawson Wilson.
Here.
Brett Witham.
Here.
Beth Gott.
Here.
Jeff Young.
Here.
Myself, Mark Good. Co-Deportment Officer slash Town Manager Jesse Dunbar. Recording Secretary Terry Janzbrad. And Town Attorney for tonight, Diane O'Connell. And the applicant's team. And I believe it is Cheryl here. Yes, hi. And members of the public. Excuse appices and unexcuse appices. Everybody's here. We don't have to go through that. Adjustment adoption of the agenda. I think we just have to do, discuss whether it's a modified or new application before going actually into a completeness review. Minutes for August 24th, 21. We're gonna have Beth recuse herself now because of conflict of interest. And you may, you can go down and actually sit in the audience if you want, if you see the case. Anybody say anything about the minutes? My own question was, I can't really confirm that Jamie Thurlo, Kevin Buck, and Marcia Madira were there because of the Zoom meeting, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And do we typically keep track of that? I mean, select where members come to pay for meetings.
Need town board members. They're usually recorded in the.
I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
So moved to approve the minutes. I have a motion to second on the table to approve the minutes of August 24th. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yep. And Beth's going to abstain, so. Next order of business, we have to decide whether this is a modified or a new application before going on to possibly considering the completeness. I have some questions. I don't know if other board members do as well. And one, I'm gonna ask this of the applicants. For the first time, we see that the Kellytown Campground is linked to this campground. Originally, you were gonna have a locked gate. And now the plan is to close off the Kellytown entrance and go down through the campground. Is that correct?
Mark, the original application materials stated that should this site be approved, that entrance would be removed. That's part of the record, that the entrance on Kellytown would be removed. That is always in the case, so that is, that's not a change. If you wanted to pull up on the other applications, it's part of the description. It's still in the description.
Was that in the supplemental?
It's in the road and circulation description. It's still the program.
Well, anyway, the question is, why isn't this an amendment to an existing campground? Why is this a new application?
We are not amending that project.
But this project is being incorporated into the other project.
All we've said is, should this project be approved, as a concern of the residents' fire and as a benefit of good planning, we will be able to eliminate that access. That's it. That doesn't occur at this instant.
Anybody else? Other questions?
And just so I understand, does everybody understand that it was in the prior application? If you read the prior materials, it's exactly what it said. And you even said how they lock gate. What that meant was that the old entrance there will be secured for emergency vehicles should they need to get in, but the Kellytown Road one would be eliminated. And that's still the case.
Well, maybe I misunderstood. I thought it was gonna be locked between the two campgrounds. That's what I understood.
Ms. Pratt, I could agree with the old application that it's not. There's a new concern for traffic congestion. That's why we told us that you wanted to use the required terms.
On this issue, on the site plan ordinance is under Article 9, paragraph D, C, C 5, where a lot is furnished on two or more streets, a primary access to and egress from a lot must be provided from a street with less potential traffic congestion and for traffic pedestrians hazards. Access from other streets may be allowed if it's safe and does not promote short cutting through the site. So this reading, the way I read this, it sounds like we should have the entrance to the campground off the Kellytown Road, not off the main road, right now on the site plan ordinance.
Unless, of course, they were separate campgrounds.
But we're being told to not.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I understand. I didn't bring the original book. Mr. Hamilton, yes?
So just two things. One is, I'm procedurally confused. I think number Young is looking to application of a standard review at the time of completeness. Even at the word, I thought it had 9C5. It says where a lot has fronted on two of our streets.
You're muffled, Andy. I couldn't understand you, sorry.
It says where a lot has fronted on two of our streets. The primary access to and egress from the lot must be provided from a street with less potential traffic congestion. As Mr. Johnson described, and did it for a very logical reason, there's been no proposal to merge the prior campground into this one. So we don't have a common law that it's served by two streets. We have instead a proposal that if we have a campground that is yet in being, it's a pending proceeding, if you haven't acted on it yet, the applicant will accommodate those who have concerns with the Kellytown Road. So that's all we're saying is, as part of a pool condition, we might impose a condition that says, be clear as to how the adjacent campground is gonna be accessed on both the roads. But I don't find 9C5 applicable at this point. And I think Mr. Johnson's point is, neither is supposed to be a project.
Okay. Can I address the chairman's question?
Yeah.
You're gonna see on page 19, page 59.
Yeah, that's where I saw it, yeah.
Okay, so that is exactly the same as stated on page 41 of the fire, where it says, you intend to remove the entrance on Kellytown Road and use the new one or two entrance once approved and instructed. This access will be locked and only used in emergency, unlocked at that time. That hasn't changed. What we're saying is, if this campground was approved, he said it then, we would be able to eliminate entrance on Kellytown. So your starting question was that that changed. I'm telling you, that was in the original.
Okay. I remember discussing it in the pre-application conference that we had. And maybe I misunderstood you at the time. Jesse, what do you have? Are you looking at the original?
I might have to give it to you.
Yep.
It's the internal vehicle circulation, verbale. That's not changed. You may have misheard what it was, but that's not a work. It shows it.
Okay.
Yeah, I will say that I misheard it. I thought there was gonna be a gate at the other end. And so I misinterpreted.
I was gonna say that it was written in the prior application. And it's written in the current application.
And I'll say that I misinterpreted.
Understood. But it's not new.
Well, then, the substantive change between the two has to do with the RV parking, which was in circulation, which was included in the first application, not.
Specificity, it needed.
It remained the same. The Kellytown, it was just.
It was just.
Ms. O'Connell. Do you think that change, or not change, but the fact that they're linking to campgrounds makes it a amendment to an existing campground?
I mean, if it hasn't changed from the one that was initially, if that's not a change, then I don't think you, so you approved, you already had a completeness, completeness review, and approved, approved the application. So if that aspect of it hasn't changed, then I don't think you can retroact and go back and make a different decision on that.
Any opinions, anybody?
I think it's a separate application. They're two different pieces of land. That was, I wasn't here, part of the board, and it seems like that was approved and it's already moving forward. Now they, there's another application for a separate piece of land, same use, but, and I kinda, I mean, I understand what they're doing. I suppose if you, if you followed that 95C, unless assuming this move forward, you would route all the traffic up Kellytown Road? I can't imagine people would want that. So I kinda, as a practical matter, I kinda understand where they're coming from.
Yeah, no, that wasn't my concern. My concern is whether this is actually linking the two campgrounds, should it be considered amendment or modification of the existing campground that's already been approved? Or, or, we're trying to figure out whether this is a new application or a modification of an existing application.
Right, and I think if you would decide that under these facts that it was, then what you would force an applicant to do is to, is to keep both acts, keep both open, keep both access points open, and have a gate between the two?
Which is the way I originally understood it. It just seems like formal or function a little bit, I.
Yeah, for the purposes of the, what, the reduction, that aspect of the project has not changed from when we were, the prior. And that's the substance of the question. We maybe misinterpreted how that was read, but the language involved in it is still there because of good planning.
Any other questions, board members?
Now, I guess I'll just make a comment. I mean, the one thing that I'm mindful of as we think about these things is, what does, what does it incent? Like, what does it, you know, what is it gonna, would force people to do? And so I'm just, I'll just make that statement of like, what, what is this gonna encourage in the future? Or what is it, what kind of behavior does it discourage? And just, I'm just mindful of that in this discussion, and I'm sure the discussions will continue to happen.
No need to discuss it further, as you said.
No, 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 absolutely no. I'm just, no, we can discuss those, we should discuss it as much as we think we need to.
Lawson, any opinion on that, or anything, questions?
I think that the relationship to the existing project on Kellytown Road does not seem to impact my understanding or interpretation of whether or not this is a new application or a revision of the existing application.
So the question remains, we think this is a new application or not? And I'm willing to entertain some quick opinions from the legal authorities in the room. Ms. Chow, do you wanna say something?
Yes, please, sir.
Yes.
Should I address the board? Would you like me to stand?
Please, yeah. If you could even come closer because of the mask, if you don't mind. And can you please keep it short?
I'm a lawyer, so.
Well, yeah. We're fully aware of that.
I have a clock. We want to put a clock on these things.
I would suggest to the board that if you did receive my submission from earlier today, dated 21st, that this issue actually can be pretty easily discussed and decided, really not so much on the basis of whether this is a new application or a modified or revision of an existing application. The reason why that was discussed at the last meeting in August was to determine whether or not whatever was going to be submitted, at that time it was a concept plan on August 10th, and now it's become an application dated September 14th. But whatever that is, is it a pending application? And the reason that's important, it, as a practical matter, is you need to know which ordinance standards to apply to whatever it is before you. And whether you call this a new or a modified application, I would submit that in my letter on page, this is actually in your land use ordinance, I don't think you need to go to the sort of semantical or subjective discussion as to whether or not this is a new or revised application, because I think the decision whether this is, whether something is a pending application or not, actually turns on a section in your land use ordinance, if you turn to page six of my letter.
Let me, hold on a second. I believe, I was the only board member to receive your letter. And Jesse and I discussed, Jesse and I, Jesse and I discussed whether to send it to the other board members late this afternoon. And I don't know, obviously, that didn't happen, so I don't know.
No, I discussed with Diane. I do have copies if you want them now.
I had assumed that this was for distribution, because as Mr. Dunbar's memo suggested, the two issues that we were gonna take up tonight were whether or not this was a complete application or an incomplete application, and then whether or not this was a new or a modified or revised application for purposes of determining whether it was pending before your ordinance. Those are the two issues. My memo of today was submitted by the deadline, addressed those two issues. I thought they would be distributed. I'm prepared to make my oral statements, or I don't know if the board would like to take a recess to review the materials. I had asked that they be distributed.
Ms. O'Connell?
Can I be heard on this?
Briefly, Andy.
So, I think you've already heard arguments from the parties. I got a chance to review the submitt. I actually don't think it would be fair, given the timing of its submission, which was intended for the substantive review you're conducting on September 28th, to be reviewed within 15 minutes of this proceeding. I would say that there are two tests that have to be applied as to whether we've still got pending proceedings or position to do. And the way you get a lot of that is to decide that you've got a new application, that I think must involve one of three things. A change in use, not here. A new applicant, not here. Or an expansion such that a different land use review is now dictated. Such as, for instance, if we propose a substantive, we have one. So none of those three tests are met. I've read and can respond to Ms. Chow's written argument, but I think she was proposing to do an oral presentation, I would consent to that. But I would not consent to the distribution of written materials, because it will slow this whole process down. It's really for the technical reasons.
Would you object to somebody just following along in her submission? She's gonna basically repeat the same things. In other words, if they handed out the, her letter to the other board members, they could follow along.
Mr. Chairman, can I be heard on this?
Yes.
From a process perspective, I disagree with Mr. Hamilton, because the order of things is that before you can conduct a technical substantive review or even determine completeness, I assume that you need to hear these threshold arguments and make a decision on them. So I've provided a written submission for that. I don't know that we need to recess, but I think I should be allowed to be heard on those arguments. Mr. Hamilton has his arguments. I have arguments on behalf of CTR that I believe are dispositive on the issue. And I can explain briefly why, why I believe that to be the case.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't, I just wanna disagree that the purpose of the submissions that were due today were only to address technical issues with respect to the application. And the reason that's so is that we shouldn't have to submit technical comments and have a deadline of today on an application that has not yet been deemed to be complete. That makes no sense. It doesn't make sense from a due process standpoint, and it wouldn't be fair. So unless and until you've made a completeness determination on the September 14th application, the 239 pages that are before you, unless and until you've done that, your land use ordinance says that an application is not pending unless and until a completeness determination has been done. All parties in this case have consented to, have agreed to. In fact, Mr. Hamilton proposed that a new completeness determination be done as part of their retooling their concept.
That's not correct.
You can defer when it's your turn. And so with all parties having agreed and even suggested that a completeness, a new completeness determination needed to be made on whatever was being submitted on September 14th, your ordinance says that an application is pending only after it has been determined to be complete by the reviewing authority. And that's section D9, Article 8 of the land use ordinance, which does apply in this case. The land use ordinance applies just as the site plan review ordinance applies to you in your capacity as a reviewing authority over a campground set plan application.
Let me stop you right there. Diane, I don't see a problem with letting Ms. Chow tell us why she thinks this should not be, or this should be considered a new application.
Yeah, so just, just to clarify, you did find the application complete that came out. Right.
Right.
So at the last meeting, a decision was made to, instead of making a decision on whether it was a modified plan, you wanted to see the actual technical changes before you made that decision. So, so this is not, this is not a new application at this point. This is, this is a application that's, that you've already considered to be complete. And then the question for you first today is, is the revised documentation, is that a modification of that application that you found complete? Or is it a completely new application? I think that's the first thing that you need to focus on. And I do believe that Amy needs to address that, because she was here at the last meeting when we discussed it. And that's the one legal issue that both attorneys here need to address tonight. But I think that's sort of the limit of what should be addressed. And her memorandum really speaks to a lot more of the technical things that would be discussed at an actual public hearing. And I think from memory and from the minutes, the idea, they were to submit something today for that hearing that we had. They were to be provided by the 14th, the changes, and have a week to submit their submittals so that if it does go ahead, they'll submit it. And that was the, and I think that the memorandum that we got at lunchtime today goes way beyond addressing the narrow.
I agree. I'm just talking about whether it's a new application or a modified application.
Right.
And, and she should be able to at least briefly make her arguments, I'm gonna say, for a new application, I'm sure.
Right. I do agree with that.
Okay.
Can I?
Yep.
In your letter, memorandum, whichever it's called, is there a specific section discussing this issue?
Yeah, is what?
There, is there a specific section?
Yes, there is.
I think we should have copies of it before we go forward.
And that's fine. I just wanna be clear for the record, perfectly clear on one point. It does say in the land use ordinance that an application is pending only after it's been determined to be complete. And we, are we all in agreement we made that determination in March?
For a application, yes.
For a application? Okay. Thank you.
Which is different than what we have before us today.
Well, we don't know that, right? What we, what we do know is that in March, that application, we made a determination of completeness, so it is, it was pending at least of the time of that determination. Whether that continues, whether it merges into this, whatever you wanna call it, I'm hesitant to even put a label on it. That's what we're here to decide.
May I ask?
But you're afraid Ms. Chow should be able to?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Before we proceed, I just wanna make the procedural point that I may report to Chairman Goode on that, and you typically allow the opponents to an application to go first and last, and you put us in the. and you put us in the middle. And I would say it's only fair to the applicant to have the opportunity to be heard on this.
First.
If he wants to respond, that's fine, but I find it objectionable that in several meetings that we've had on this application, you invite opponents, samples, to go first, and you often let them go last. That's, that's.
I'm not sure that's exactly true, Eddie, and, and I apologize. You didn't jump up like you normally do to assert yourself, and that's why I, I called on Ms. Chow. But Ms. Chow, if it's okay with you, we'll let Mr. Hamilton explain to us why this is not a new application briefly.
Mr. Chairman, with, with your indulgence, I have not finished the presentation, and I think Ms. O'Connell raised some questions that I would like to respond to. And I'm quite happy to see the floor from Mr. Hamilton when I am finished making the arguments, but especially since you haven't read my memo. And I do think this is a threshold decision that you need to make. I would like to be heard briefly on this. And I'm happy to see as much time as you would like to allow Mr. Hamilton when I'm finished. As opposed to ping ponging back and forth.
About how long will you be? About how long will you do that?
We'll ask you that.
Ten minutes? I, I know you want me to be short. I don't think it'll be 10.
I, I would be nicer, but.
Okay.
So, O'Connell, what do you think?
I, I, I still would like the copies of it if we're going to be, if certain parts pertain to what we're trying to sign at this threshold point.
I objected to that.
If I may finish before you object, I'd appreciate it. I think if.
If you hand it out while I'm just objecting, so hold on, then build a distribution.
How many objected distribution?
I, I believe that.
To go to the planning boards today?
For, for a foundational reason. There was a lot of discussion at the last meeting left scheduled. How can you have a discussion about materials that are submitted at noon time on the day of the planning board meeting? The submission on the 21st was for the 28th when we were having a public hearing. Your memo, Mr. Dunbar, your agreement, Mr. Chairman, was this is not a public hearing. Maybe this is quite clear that opponents don't have the opportunity to speak. This completeness review typically is to check whether the submissions required by your submission checklist have been submitted, and that's the purpose of a completeness review. And both Ms. Chow and I had the opportunity at your prior meeting to argue all of the factors associated with this newer modified application. How many bites of the apple are we going to give people to keep making the same argument? It's against an efficient review of this project. That's my foundational concern. Do you got to get through this review?
I'd like to be heard on this.
And he has a point. I mean, we did set forth the process, and the, and this is not part of it. I mean, it kind of makes it tough. I mean, how, how long is this thing?
We still need to make that decision.
Mr. Chairman, I have.
I have another approach. Maybe we shouldn't be hearing from counsel at all. Hear from Greg on the changes, and let's make our determination.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I think you're right.
And not get bobbed down in the weeds with the attorney's arguments.
I would like to be heard in, in response to.
Ms. O'Connell?
Yes, I mean, I think Mr. Young makes a very good point. At the last meeting, both, both attorneys and the applicant, the opponents, they and, and the members here at the board hashed out this issue for quite some time. And just prior to making a decision on that, you wanted to see the actual changes in the technical format. I think you have those before you. I think your idea of speaking with Mr. Johnson about those and the questions you have, I think is, is well founded. I think that out of the courtesy, the applicant's attorney should be given the opportunity at the end to summarize his point, his client's perspective, and Attorney Chow should be given the same courtesy as well to address this narrow issue that you've already heard about before you make the decision. At, at the last meeting, it was not a requirement or permission or further submissions to be made by the opponent on this issue. So, I would suggest that what the memorandum today is really geared towards a substantive review on the 28th if you go forward with that.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, for the record, I'd like to be heard on this procedural issue because I think the problem started here with the planning board attempting to schedule a public hearing on an application that was not yet complete. So I will go back and suggest that as of August 24th, there was no application pending before you for a completeness review. It was a concept plan only. So to suggest that I can only make arguments about an application regarding whether it's complete before that application is submitted is simply a ridiculous argument. Of course, when an application is submitted and complete, I can anticipate and make arguments. But until I have seen the application that the applicant wishes to, to, to submit for a completeness determination, I can't make all the arguments that, that I wish to make. And it is a threshold decision for this board before, before you entertain substantive review. In, in your own ordinance, your site plan ordinance, the review procedure contemplates that the planning board conducts a completeness review first, then it schedules a public hearing, which is supposed to not be set for 21 days when you know to set up. And what you, what you did as an accommodation to expedite the process here, which I would suggest is part of the problem, is, is that you scheduled a public hearing.
Didn't we already go through this at the last? I thought we did, yeah. So, I mean, I, I think, I think we've been through this.
Did a motion on it as well.
Yeah. And we discussed the timeframe, we.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment on something briefly? I think that the board, as a, as a unit, as the operator of the board, need to discuss the application. I think the checklist that Jesse has before you will draw out questions, and that will help you support whether you think it is a new application or not. That's what's been presented to the board, I think.
But it's sort of understanding that we have to make that decision first.
Well, if, if you're going through the checklist, and whether or not they've changed, you're going to be informed decision. You've also had the application for some time.
I, for one, wanted all the changes first so you look at them to do a sort of weighing as to whether we think it's so substantial it's a new application. I'm not prepared to.
You'd rather go through the completeness review first?
Yeah.
Other members?
You know, I, I, when you just announce kind of how the order of things, I, at first it was like, huh, I didn't think we were going to do it that way, but, but then I thought maybe that, that Jeff just wanted to see the application, and that it didn't make sense to go through the completeness until we made that threshold question, you know, answered that threshold question. But I, I don't, I go either way. I mean, if, if we think the completeness discussion will sort of tease out, you know, and help inform the, the threshold decision, I'm okay, I'm okay either way.
I can work, I was basically going by our memo here, which basically says that should be first, but.
We, we keep kicking the can down the road.
Mr. Chairman, I will sit down if that, if the board's glad to go through the checklist. I would just simply ask, has the board actually been provided a copy of my letter? Because I would ask that it be provided to me at this time.
Jesse just did that. You can sit down, Mr.. So do we want to move on to the completeness review?
Makes sense to me.
Makes sense to me.
Right?
Yeah, sure, yep.
Okay. Let's do that. And some of these things are the same. I'm going to go through it.
Wait, wait, you're going through the ones that are the same?
I'm going to go through the whole checklist.
We'll be here all night. I want to make a suggestion that if, we all should have done our homework. So if any of the ones are the same that we have a question, I think we should raise it. Otherwise, we've already passed on this. Why are we beating it up again? We should have read them ones ourselves.
Okay, well, that makes sense, okay. I thought for sure you wanted to do it all, yeah.
Don't predict me.
Other board members here, are you agreeing with that? Okay.
I mean, I don't know, maybe it's worth.
You know, we ought to be careful about this here.
We should probably be a tax thorough, not.
I don't, you know, if there's, you know, I just have to read it, and we just have to agree with yes or no. So, let's go through it quickly. Okay? Everybody, so.
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay, I'm here. Okay. And of course, we're not going to vote on every, everything here, every issue. Fully, eight, one, a fully executed, four executed. Says a fully executed side copy of the application for site plan review. We have that.
Yes.
Okay. Evidence of payment of the application, we have that. One original and nine copies of written materials plus one original and nine sets of maps. The maps and drawings must be at a scale sufficient to allow review of items listed under approval standards, but in no case greater than one inch equals 100 feet. That's, we have that already. In fact, the scale is one in 50 feet, right?
Correct.
The record owner's name, address, phone number, applicant's name, address and phone number. We've got that. That's the same. Location of all required building, set backs, yards, buffers, same. Well, it's not the same as the original application, right? But we do have that.
It's updated underneath.
They're on the site plan. You do have them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I saw sa- same there. That's what I was reading. That's not the case. Okay, we have that. Names and addresses of all property owners within 500 feet of any or all property boundaries. We have that. Sketch map showing general location of the site within the town based on tax map. Yep, we have that. Boundaries of all contiguous property under total or partial control of the owner or applicant regardless of whether all or part is being developed. Survey depicting additional Hopkins lot and supplemental binder. So that's the Kellytown campground, correct?
Correct. You have full boundary surveys at tab 33.
Okay. Tax map, lot number.
Was that in, excuse me, was that in the one before?
That was requested and provided in the supplemental.
In the supplemental. Thank you.
Tax map and lot number of the parcel or parcels in which the project is located. We do have that. Copy of the deed to the property, an option to purchase the property or other document to demonstrate right title interest. We have the copy of the deed. Name, registration, number, and seal the person who prepared the plan, if applicable. That's Greg. He's got a seal on there and name, registration number. Evidence of applicant's technical and financial capability to carry out the project as proposed. We do have a letter from the Chia Savings Bank reflecting the new costs of the project and the ability for the, of the applicant to meet that. Zoning classifications, we've got that. On the tax map, bearings and length of all property lines to be developed and the source of this information. We have a survey. Everybody see that? Yep, okay. Location and size of any existing civic and well, culverts and drains, underground tanks. And the only things that are existing are the, at the farmhouse itself, and we do have that. Location and names and present width of existing streets and rights of way within adjacent or the proposed, to the proposed development. We've got that. The location, dimensions, and elevation of existing buildings on the site. Of existing buildings. Is there one of the farmhouse?
Yeah, there is.
I saw it of, of the, the words. Location and dimensions of existing driveways, parking and loading areas, walkways and sidewalks on or immediately adjacent to the site. We have that. That's basically the same. That hasn't changed. Location of intersecting roads or driveways within 200 feet of the site. Yep, that's Clark Point in Kellytown Roads. Location of open drainage courses, wetlands, stone walls, graveyards, fences, stand of trees, and other important features. Habitat maps, tab four, onsite map. I think I saw that. We okay with that, everybody?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Direction of existing surface water drainage across the site. Tab four. We okay with that?
Sorry, just lost for a second. I lost you for a second.
I think it's actually.
Two thirty-nine. Yeah, two thirty-nine.
Is that two thirty-nine in the new book? Are those numbers?
Page numbers.
Or page numbers referring to, when you have a slash, one is.
This is information that came from two thirty, that might inform.
Okay.
And two thirty-nine mark is marked in the back.
Okay, okay. So you, we okay with that? Yep?
Yeah, there's something drainage. Plenty of errors. Lot of errors.
Plenty of drainage. Location, front view, dimensions, and lighting of existing signs. We did see the sign plans there. There's an updated third directional, says.
That's good instance to see there the unupdated sign that states the farmhouse cafe. That is in the signs exhibit on two thirty-nine. So, as I said before, that maybe going through the checklist of forms will not be the major changes, but it being transparent through one of the little sign that's a blacker that says farmhouse cafe, which is on a stage.
Is that right out at the road, or is that on the?
That's right, right in front of the building.
Well, in front of the building, okay. Everybody all set with that? Okay.
Wait, sorry, I, no. Greg, did you say it's referenced on two thirty-nine?
Uh, let's see, um, sorry, I was looking at the wrong line.
Two oh, two oh eight.
Sorry, yes.
The farmhouse, uh, sixteen by forty-eight, say farmhouse cafe and store.
Right, okay.
I have the wrong state.
I see, right, and so you're just going to put a big black box over the portion, right, sign on it?
Location and dimensions of, oop, sorry.
We're good.
Were you done, were you done?
I'm done.
Location and dimensions of any easements and copies of existing covenants or deed restrictions. We've got that, I believe. Anybody disagree? Okay. Here we go. Indication of water supply sufficient in quantity and quality for both normal use and fire protection. One fifty-two. I think you did some test wells. Is that correct?
Uh, we had a well drawdown test. We took the opportunity to use the substance, well, as often monitor it, had the geologists come down and draw it down for, you know, assessment of volume yield along with the other data in the area showing that our water is being down.
And there's going to be a fire pond that we see on the site plan. Is that correct?
Yep. We had always spoken to the fire chief and understanding the limited resources they have in the area. It's a good idea of able to pump up some stormwater to assist, to put it more central towards the front where it might just make more sense for access.
So, that's right behind the farmhouse essentially, on the plant. Yep, okay. Questions?
Yeah, just one question. Where does, where does peer review come in in this process? Is it after we find everything complete, we want a peer review?
Yes.
After we find complete?
Yes.
Not during the process of.
No.
Thank you.
It's my understanding, yeah.
Is that right, Jesse? That's what I thought, just trying to remember. Thank you.
What do you think, folks? What's that?
Yeah, we moved eight four, tab A.
Uh, yes. No, 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 eight, three, one.
Eight, three, I think L, but, yep.
Oh, L, yes.
I'm, I'm good with that. I think that that is complete.
Everybody agree?
Yeah.
That's what I saw later earlier. Uh, "Proposed development activity. Estimated demand for water supply and sewage disposal together with the location and dimensions of all water supply and wastewater disposal. Evidence of inadequacy for the proposed use, including soils, test pit data if onsite sewage disposal is proposed." Fifty-two.
That, that, um, completing this item covers two separate issues. So, the preference of the water supply, wastewater disposal is separate. Um, we did look at the three high above the stuff of, of water quantity.
Yes.
The, uh, it's one fifty-two, but also the soils are covered under, uh, page one sixty-two. Because I once said it was two separate things.
Yes, I'm, thank you.
One sixty-two has the soils profile, whether described as, uh, PC and the sewage, um, evaluation.
And there's one fifty-two, the letter from FPT, um, talk about the demand. It says that there's lots of water, so they say that, they predict how much water the campground would leave?
Um, they were, um, he estimated, I think about ten thousand and the, uh-
Oh, I see, two years.
Like nine thousand to ten thousand, so there is-
Equivalent volume, there's, yep.
Last paragraph of that letter, well, yeah, on that page, it says, "Greg is estimated to be ten thousand, nine hundred twenty-four gallons per day."
Yeah. When we go to the, um, uh, the stuff of soils guy, as we reminded, he was magnificently soil, I mean, the, um, hydrogeological drawdown test just takes some time. His, um, calculations are short, it was like six to nine thousand, I think.
Six to nine.
Well, we'll be, it'll be about seven to nine thousand.
Yeah, and that's just based on pattern of, of use and, and that, and, um, couple.
So, would you, that, it's hard to hear when everybody's asked, what did you say, Greg?
Uh, we said that the estimates for groundwater sewage are equal, they're between, say, they're about nine thousand gallons per day.
Did you hear that?
Yeah, that I did, I heard something about six or seven to nine.
Uh, let me, I was going from there, yeah.
Yeah, one per minute.
Seven to nine thousand.
Seven to nine. Thanks.
Mark?
Complete.
Yeah, okay. Greg? I mean, Jeff, I mean, yeah, but. Uh, "Direction proposed surface water drainage across the site and from the site with assessments of impact on downstream properties." Page sixty-three.
So, we get lots of arrows again on the site plan, we get rid of that. And then page sixty-three, uh, begins to be, um, school water report, which essentially considers the offsite areas that can never change because the watershed offsite don't change. Um, so it's more of an analysis of the recollection of, you know, the previous areas for the proposed, you know, self inside of the project. So you have a school water report, uh, beginning of page sixty-three. And then if you dial into there, you'll see the watershed maps that consider the offsite flows and then the, um, comparison of flows to the basement structure that you can count.
Now, is there a reason you stuck with the twenty-five year, twenty-four hour storm event? Instead of, uh, I think, is it the state now, it's looking at, uh-
But, um, I actually used your ordinance. And your ordinance says create post development, that doesn't have a numerical reference. Um, it's pretty standard to use a twenty-five year storm. If you, uh, depending on what you're, you're trying to do, um, I have actually used the twenty-five year storm for your ordinance and the free post, but we looked at the ten year storm for sizing of, uh, level spreaders, and that's in the report also. So we've used the ten year, uh, the twenty-five year, and then, um, also look at, um, we're capable of look at what happens in a hundred year, where it goes. So, technically, we might have a farmyard, so we've often looked at how those, um, other storms affect and size probably. You'll find a table in there that talks about the level spreaders' size at a ten year, ten year old farm. That's a table.
What's a level spreader?
Uh, a place to take channelized flow and redistribute it to sheet flow, encourage infiltration. So if you have a pipe, it doesn't stay a pipe, uh, it passes through a stone burn per se, and approach a wooden buffer in a, in a very, very spread out manner to reduce velocity to, uh, encourage infiltration, reduce that and transport all this thing. Mitigate. So your, your updated school water report for that section is in section sixty-three.
Folks?
There.
It's there?
It's there.
Yeah? Okay. "Provisions for handling solid waste, including hazardous and special waste and location and proposed screening of any onsite collection or storage facilities." And we know that, uh, you're going to have dumpsters, right?
Yeah, so there's four refuse, um, uh, there's four refuse pads, they made tents called out on two thirty-nine, which is the site plan. In addition, I need to define the, um, so two thirty-nine is being site planned there.
Two thirty-eight, oh, yeah, okay.
Uh, two thirty-
The two thirty-nine is the big one, talks in the back, Mark.
Oh, okay.
That talks about solid, but also, um, what we said, I guess, in, um, including refuse cans that have site, um, is in the operations manual in the front of the, uh, project on the page, um, eleven and fifteen, if I'm, uh, correct. As we're saying, maybe we'll improve, um, and understand some changes of quantity, but then operating, we talked about having a canister in the site, uh, and that is, that is different. So that's something that probably depends.
And, uh, I did notice, I don't know if it's applicable here, but I did notice that you were putting thirty gallon or larger trash cans at every campsite and, uh, other buildings, correct?
That's right.
Yeah, as we now require the, uh, ordinance changes adopted in, in May.
On our, do we, this chief, it references page one nineteen for this? Is that, is that anything to do with solid waste, or does that even-
No, it doesn't, it is typo.
That's fine, I just wanted to know.
We all came with that one?
Two thirty-nine? You're the, oh, solid waste, I'm sorry.
Eight-four C.
Sixteen.
Page sixteen talks about-
Yeah, one, one nineteen, I just, that's the typo.
Oh, definitely.
Just a catch, I don't know.
Yeah.
Is that been met?
Yes.
Okay. Uh... Where are we here? Need larger-
Eight-four D.
I see it, yeah. "The location, dimensions and materials to be used in the construction of proposed driveways, parking, loading areas and walkways, any changes in traffic flow onto or off site." "Entrance will be three inches of pavement over eighteen inches of MDOT." "Corrected MDOT permit included in the supplemental binder." I did notice that the, uh, oh, it's in the supplemental one, okay. Because I noticed in this, uh, uh, new book here, that it refers to, uh, when our township in Piscatawkey County, yeah.
So, the old one, uh, still exists, we're good.
Yeah, I do have a question about that. You, in your material, said that's a thirty mile an hour, uh, thirty mile an hour zone. But it's forty miles an hour, according to the signs. It's forty miles an hour until you get to that thirty mile an hour zone, heading towards Tremont. The sign that you show in the photos has the entrance. You come up the hill, you'll see right across the street from that zone or road, it says forty miles an hour.
Uh, okay, if you, it comes in the direction of the mark, because we come to the, the village part there, it's forty.
In the village, yeah, what, yeah.
And so, that side is thirty as you approach until it changes to forty, so, um-
But, but the entrance itself is in the forty mile hours zone, according to the signs.
I'm going to disagree, I believe it's thirty.
You mean Piscatawkey? Piscatawkey.
I don't think it changes, we use that sign.
Well, yeah.
Well, from both directions? I'm confused. I think one of you talking from the north, one's coming from the south.
As you go, when you show the photo of the, the entrance there in one of these, there's a thirty mile hours zone sign.
Yep.
Okay, I'm headed towards west Tremont, okay, or the village of west Tremont, down the hill. As you go past the entrance to the proposed campground, there's a sign that says thirty miles an hour. As you come up the hill, towards the church and the campground, right across one oh two, or the Tremont Road, I should say, it says forty miles an hour. So it changes right there. All I'm saying is, it seems to me that the entrance to the campground's in a forty mile hours, mile an hour zone and not a thirty mile an hour zone. I don't know how much difference that makes. And I don't-
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm going to find the, um, area just for a second. But it does have the photo there. We went back and forth a number of times with the D O T, um, they don't say.
Page fifty and fifty-one. Fifty-six or fifty-seven, I'm sorry.
Uh, it's got, you're recused from this discussion.
That's okay, um, so it was in the old application, you can see, uh, page fifty-six is a thirty mile an hour. And so, the entrance itself is beyond that thirty mile an hour sign. Do you want to take a look at page fifty-six, Mark?
Fifty-six, in which the new book?
We can dash earlier, and I see your comments about page number and stuff.
Page numbers are awesome. I know how much of-
There's two ordinances.
How much of paint, but that might, that is produced.
Some page numbers have multiple page numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
On that paper.
Page fifty-six.
Well, there we go, yeah.
We split the difference.
They're right there, the, the entrance is.
You said before that?
No, it's just after.
Oh, okay. Hmm, is that sign still there? I'm okay then.
Um, I, I'm still stuck on eight point four D, and, um, Greg, where does it say what materials the roads?
The cross, the typical cross section on page, on two thirty-nine on the plan.
Right in, yeah. Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Los, are you okay with that?
Yep.
Jeff?
Yep.
Brett?
Yes.
D, yes. Uh, "Proposed landscaping and buffering." Two oh two. Now, um, most of the buffering has a hundred foot setback, right? Or I mean, most, most of this has a hundred foot setback. But there are three areas where it's twenty-five feet, is that correct?
Um, yeah, I got it.
There are three areas where the buffer is less than a hundred. One of them is clearly the entrance to the site, uh, where, where the entrance comes off one oh two. One of them is where the road dips down towards that, um, the, the, um, the eleven year site.
Mm-hmm.
And that is because that road layout is following an existing woodcut, and so it's already cleared. So it didn't make sense to remove the road inside, you know, beyond the hundred foot buffer and still have the, the land cleared. So that's why that one dips down a little bit there. And then the third one, um, is in the, that kind of the L corner. It is on the east side of the property, adjacent to the proposed septic fields. And in that location, we still maintain the twenty-five foot buffer. But in addition to the twenty-five foot buffer, we are proposing the berm and fence. So it's a five foot high berm and then a six foot high solid, uh, wood fence on top of that berm. So it's, um, eleven feet in height of a solid, uh, screen buffer in that location in addition to the twenty-five feet.
And that's similar to what you were proposing originally, right, in some places?
That detail was on the original plan.
Yeah.
This is the only place where it, it has followed the road because everywhere, everywhere else, other than some of the places I told you, the entrance, obviously, and then that woodcut, we have increased the buffer to a hundred foot minimum level.
Okay.
Do you recall, um, Mark, or, um, during, um, during the site visit, the, one of the queries was, when we were discussing, uh, why are we not more centered? Part of that review during the site block, um, we looked carefully at the plan, was the ballot. And so, we just tweaked that into the ballot more closely based on comments from the board during that particular review, part of the process.
Questions, anything? We all set there?
Sure.
Showed on the plan, okay. "Location, dimensions and ground floor elevations, all proposed buildings or building expansion proposed on the site, proposed building plans included in supplemental binder." We all set there?
Um, I just want to make sure that the yurt, somewhere talks about what the yurts are built on.
Yeah, they, um, under the building plans, um, everything, I, um-
Sixteen seventeen?
I think it's three risers, uh, three six inch risers off of native grade, and that's what the building plans show, the earth.
We only get the drawing, like, on page seventeen?
Uh, correct.
Uh-huh, yeah.
They show the risers. So you have finished grade and we're, we're running the natural ground, and so it's three risers and-
They're sixteen feet tall.
Yeah, plus eighteen inches.
Right.
And once again, no kitchen facilities, correct?
Excuse me, can I just ask a clarification question about the supplemental binder? And is it eight point four F? Has that been?
No, the supplemental binder, um, because the checklist is the same as the one we've been using the whole time, they had some footnotes in there, um, from the co-department prior. That's what the reference supplemental binder, we combined all the prior to the ten to one and numbers of pages based on, um, just ease of reference. Um, but the, the reference supplemental binder, it doesn't, doesn't drain, it's a great thing to combine different ones.
So, Ms. Chal, you don't have a copy of the supplemental binder, is that correct?
I, that's what I'm trying to determine, I don't think I do. Is, is it, is the supplemental binder part of the two hundred and thirty-nine pages?
No.
Well, it's been incorporated into, I mean, we're looking at the, yeah. We're not referencing that.
Everything in here is in here too?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was, I wasn't sure if that was so. That's why I brought both. So yes, you do have all the material, then.
Okay, so everything in the supplemental binder is, is part of the two hundred and thirty-nine pages.
Correct, Greg?
That's correct.
Do we have the fitness building here in the... What page is that?
Did you say nineteen?
Yeah, okay, nineteen, okay. Can I ask a question? What is an aesthetics room?
I can answer that. It's a room where you get facials or...
I assumed as much, okay.
Yeah, it's skin care, body care.
To make you look good, okay.
And feel good.
Or better, unfeel good. Okay. We all set there, guys? Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Location, front view, materials, and dimensions of proposed signs, together with method of securing the sign. We've kind of gone through that, haven't we, with signs? Yeah. So we're all set there. Location and type of exterior lighting. And that's on two twenty-two.
Greg, does it say how high the area lights are? Fourteen feet high?
Yeah, fourteen feet. Really want to keep them below tree level.
I need the ground.
And they're all done, or facing or night sky compliant, looks like. Correct?
Yep. And did you talk at all about, maybe it's sort of implied, that ten P M, okay, they will not operate past ten P M, the area lights. The walkway lights will not operate past ten P M.
The only lights after ten would be the deck lights, and that's a motion sensor, so if someone goes outside, somebody comes in, or their car. They're very small, down, deck lights.
Attached to the building itself?
No, they're on a post, it's where the stair comes up and makes the deck.
And the security lighting too? The three buildings that minimal security lighting, would that's beyond that thing?
Motion is, oh, they're off the ten, yes.
They're off the ten, and then figured. I see licenses and timers and motion.
Will the fitness center be in use after ten? We okay there?
Yep.
Was there a basketball court or something like, remember seeing drawn? Is there?
On the, on the earlier concept plan, there was...
But not on the final.
So it's not on the front.
Without spinning a lot of pages, are there any outside recreational courts, places that would be lit at night?
Even before ten P M?
Sorry, can you repeat that? What did you ask for?
I asked if there's any sort of outside recreational areas that would, I just don't have it firmly, that would be lit at night.
So like the playground area or something like that?
No, I'm very interested, so thank you. I'm just interested in whether or not this came here.
Her answer was no.
No.
Okay. So like after dark, whenever it's dark and stuff?
We didn't get that detail at an answer.
I asked before ten P M, correct? And you said?
There are no outdoor courts, so there is no outdoor lighting that would be on after ten. The only outdoor facility that would have lighting might be the picnic area, and that might be a soffit under the picnic shelter. Again, done.
Nothing at the playground, nothing on the dog park?
Correct.
No sports courts.
No sports courts.
Yep. Okay. Jeff, have anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
You saw the light, not on the specs, but there's a light plan in there.
I did see that when I was looking through it earlier, yes. Location of all utilities, including fire protection.
It's one sixty-six, the, the...
One sixty-six as well.
Now, all the utilities, varied, including power, line.
Powers could be underground, still, yeah, all that. Do you anticipate blasting?
Do you anticipate blasting? In some places, I'm sure, a lot of Tremont House ledge, not designed, it's pretty common.
I have noticed that. And we have fire protection, we have the fire pond. Are there like hydrants or anything like that?
There's a dry hydrant. That shows up as, on the one sixty-six and the two thirty-nine, the intersection of the water. So we just have to...
Oh, like dry hydrant, I see it right now, yeah.
So the pond itself is designed with a safety ledge that's two feet below water, so it has two feet of water before there's a platform, it's stone, and so if you decide to stop in, you want to go to the beach. And after that, you have flat per six feet before you name the pond, or you need, or just the fire, probably.
The power, P three, the transformer boxes. I assume there's power that gets to all the yurts and all the tents?
Yep. They do. They're, they follow the roads and the paths, but the primary, the secondary would follow the sewer and water.
And so from the transformer to the yurts is not illustrated? Right.
Yeah, they're really right near the sewer and water, because of that.
And the lit stations, do those?
They have power.
Power, but is it a lot more power than a yurt?
Uh, no, it'd be one twenty, another circuit. Yeah, and have a local to the circuit for integration to an alarm system.
Is there any? Okay, well, yeah, I mean, this is completely, we can talk about stuff like this, or...
Yeah, yeah.
The design behind it and stuff.
The condition's been met.
The condition's been met.
Yeah, yeah.
There's something, there's something for us to review and to look at.
Right. Just a quick question, is it like an electrical service building, or where's all this going to be, you know, all the breakers and that sort of thing? For some to be caused.
But when you go from the transformer, basically, that's where it steps down, and then you have secondary services. Well, the media pads are there, you have transformers, and then you distribute to the individual.
But there's no building housing, all that stuff?
No.
General description of the proposed use or activity. Well, it's a campground, or glamp ground, as you may prefer, but also public use now too, correct?
Yeah, it's based on operations. Some of the, joining the other discussions with the board during their prior, for the review of the project, there was an inception understanding of operations, so we expanded our operations and staff. The, the fifteen, I believe.
Yeah. And you mentioned shoulder seasons, that of course depends on the weather. So you could go year round, because we don't get much snow these days, and we certainly need for some winter camping, maybe?
I don't think the intention is to camp in the winter during freezing temperatures. I don't think snow is as much of the issue, as much as freezing temperatures, and a lot of, you know, these are tents or camp aside, so.
Yurt might be comfortable though. They're going to have a heat, they're going to have a heat source?
They have a heat source, but I don't think the intention is to operate in the winter. And I think that's what we say here, is it shoulder seasons? Yes. But in the winter, when it is consistently cold and freezing, a lot of the pressure is going to have to be removed and protected.
Is the, is there any, will the water lines be freeze proof?
Uh, just some of the buildings they would have to be, but not to the individual sites.
The yurt and tents?
Yeah, because that, that goes back to the question of how much work we want to disturb doing it.
Yeah.
If I think it's not, we want to be...
Right.
A lot of that can run in the wood chip paths and stuff that we described, so they won't be winterized.
They won't be winterized, so, okay.
But they won't at the end of the season.
But the cafe, do you think that'll be operating year round?
No.
What will be operating year round?
Not the campground.
Not the campground, however...
Would there be any operations open to the public year round?
No, maybe not.
It says that potentially, if there is desire, the fitness center and cafe could operate year round. Those two, if there's a desire to do that, and that would have probably generated by local traffic.
So you, you said desire, it's public desire, not necessarily the owner's wanting to?
Correct. Right, because there won't be, there won't be campers there, so we have to be...
But the fitness center or something could be open year round?
The fitness center could be open year round if there is local desire or public desire to have it open year round, that is correct. And the traffic study was generated based on that.
And how will public use be governed? Will, you have memberships to like the fitness center? Or would it be like a day fee? Certainly, like people use it for nothing, right?
I think that's a degree of detail that hasn't been determined yet. It hasn't really been determined if the public is interested in using the fitness center. So if that's something the planning board would like outlined prior to bringing a permit, we can look into that and develop an operational plan for the fitness center and the cafe more detailed than what we've shown, if we feel that's important. We can do that.
You offer the cafe, does that mean that it's going to be open to the public, or not open to the public?
Cafe is open to the public, yes.
I thought I was reading it however, I thought it was only for guests.
Correct. The entire farmhouse will be open to the public, both when the campground is operational and if there is a desire, need, then it will be open in when the camp...
So essentially, it'll function as a convenience store slash restaurant?
It is a cafe and a campground store, that's correct.
Is that the same cafe that the employees are going to be getting their meals from? And it'll be indoor dining type setup?
Seven. The seats are twenty seats.
Twenty seats?
I'm sorry.
Twenty seats.
What's twenty feet?
Twenty seats.
Oh, twenty seats.
Twenty seats in the cafe, yeah. And no, no outside tables there? Like, any tables outside the cafe? There's additional seating?
There could be technical tables, but right now, the parking and the traffic is probably reduced on twenty seats. I don't think if it's inside or outside, that would affect the parking calculation.
Any other questions, anybody? Do we think this condition's been met?
Yes.
Yeah. Jeff, you all on board with that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. An estimate of the peak hour and daily traffic to be generated by the project, we do have that. And I also see that you did include the eleven sites on the Kellytown Road campground in your traffic calculations, correct?
Yeah, we made, because it was the intersection, and that we had, based on our earlier conversation, stated, and in the prior publication, that we would, could shut down the Kellytown entrance to work the idea that we want fully evaluating the traffic, being included together.
Worked?
It's here, Jim?
Yep. Here, okay. Stormwater calculations, erosion and sedimentation control measures, and water quality and/or phosphorus export management provisions. If the project requires a stormwater permit from the D E P, or if the planning board determines that such information is necessary based upon the scale of the project, or the existing conditions in the vicinity of the project. Page sixty-three, we do have the plan, seat two three nine.
What is this comment, M V P for chapter five hundred required for one acre? Pending? Or an application pending?
What's the question?
I'm reading the comment below, eight point four L. It says, stormwater permit with M V P for chapter five hundred required for one acre of included service to service pending?
I think that's carried over from the prior one. There's not, that's not pending. We have, we have met with them, at least on two occasions. I don't know if it's pending.
So you have the permit?
No, we don't.
You don't have the permit?
We've had three applications, we've put this day.
Okay. But you do need to obtain this permit, correct? Yeah.
And the north plan and calculation, we put it in the binder, that's also carried over.
Yes. It's an interesting thing in our land use ordinance, I think it is. How do you find it here? Okay, it says requested, okay. So let's cover that, okay. Never mind. It says, applications for approval to under the ordinance must include evidence that all appropriate local, state, and federal agencies have been requested to determine additional permits may be sought from them. Final approval will be given conditionally upon receipt of these permits if they are required. So even if we would approve the project, it's not really approved, it's approved on a condition, on a condition that you get those permits in place, correct?
Understood.
That's your understanding as well? Okay. What do you think, folks? Been met?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Approval law, we do have that on the site plan. Okay, that's the checklist.
I, I, one area, which I wasn't sure where, kept putting... I, I, one area, uh, which I wasn't sure where, kept putting this checklist. So I might, I might request we go back and look at something. The application talks about reserving the back forty, back twenty, whatever it is, for potential residential development. Um, and would not be part of, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, it will not be part, they're not coming back to us for more camp, campgrounds back there. There'd be more, uh, caring towards some sort of residential development. My concern is, shouldn't we have on this plan that we're going forward, where a road we're going to access the back property? Because if you're gonna reserve it for residential development, this plan should incorporate the access to it. And I don't, I think it should be reflected on the plan. So I don't know whether this comes in completeness process or it comes in later on. I think it goes part of the completeness process, because I think it's an crucial element, uh, to be sure that. I think we have a road going in.
Somewhere in this, I did see where there is actually some use they're planning prior to that, of that reserved land, which is hiking trails and picnic areas.
Now, let's focus on this, this area itself, since walking paths are up here. Cindy, do you want to just address the regarding?
Sure, so there, there was, um, an mention in the application that you, or the supplemental material that you have, um, that walkways and picnic tables may go in that area that's called open space retained land. At this point in time, however, there is no proposal for any other development. We're not asking you to anticipate that it will be a residential development. All we, all we are saying is that for five years, nothing is going to happen. And the reason we're saying that is because there's a lot of mistrust and, and, um, one of the letters today in fact says that the walkways and picnic tables, how do we know they're not secretly developing that land by putting in those walkways, which is pretty ludicrous, but, I mean, that's, that's what people think. And, and I, I get it, I understand that. So that is why we put in a statement that says nothing will happen there for five years other than potentially walkways and picnic tables. After five years, the option, um, they would like, the applicant would like to have the option to potentially develop that, in a residential use, because the butters to that land had requested that if it ever was developed, that it be residential, that it not be additional campground. And so we have made that statement that there will, that the campground will never expand into that land. It could potentially be residential. It would be very difficult though to put in a road, an access road, because there's no plan. And, and obviously, if the applicant ever came back to you with a plan for residential development, there would have to be adequate access, and that would be on the plan at that time. But we are not asking for permission to put residential property back there. We are not really asking for anything other than it to be retained open space. And the comment that we made, so there is an understanding with the butters and the neighbor and the landlord and the town, that a campground will never expand back into that land, but potentially five years from now, the option opened that it could be residential.
Okay, but couldn't one argue? I understand, no campsites?
Yep.
Like you're talking about walking paths and picnic areas? Can't, couldn't one argue that that's part of the campground?
Um, it could be part of the campground, however, it's not impervious. And it's not a use that would generate a square footage requirement. So it, it shouldn't really change anything, um.
How are the paths and picnic areas going to be constructed?
The same way they all are, they're going to be constructed on existing graves, uh, no removal of trees, and there will be woodchips in order to kind of keep them natural walkways. So there will be no disturbance, there won't be walkways.
And there'll be picnic tables?
Um, could be picnic tables, that it could be picked up and moved, you know, they're, they're not, they would not be, um, they would not have foundations, they would not have structures around them. It's not like the beautiful Build-It Trails over Hopsick Bay. These are very much just natural walkways.
Which is part of also land management, there's so many blowdowns and fires, you know, a lot of the trails people do, they go out and they clean up the blowdowns and the dead stuff, and they chip that into those blocks and after trail. And that's, that's kind of like stewardship of land, and that's how trails are made. But I guess, the idea that, um, that something would happen in there in the future, and we have a request, and I would, you'd have to come back and meet that standard for subdivision, it would be different ordinance than the site plan or the SPO. In fact, it would be a third ordinance, so, um, there's a question, if I, it's like, the fact that it's got so much interest in it, we want it to be transparent, um, but also the commitment to not moving, um, and sort of the campground back into there, uh, we thought would help, um, that these can have third picture of intention.
Where in the application is that, I'm just trying to find, find that paragraph or sentence?
I don't remember where I saw it.
It also said that, um, the applicant has made clear DEP, um, you're setting aside land for five years from now. And so it'll be part of the DEP conversation if that's all. Thank you.
What, what'd you say?
Uh, it's on the bottom of page twelve to thirteen, and it says, "Really, this seeks to clarify and state intentions." However, this particular application, in terms of the, the name of the statement, says this.
Yeah, just wanted to see. Good.
Unrelated question to the, well, related to back twenty. Are the entire boundary of the property going to be posted in some way so campers don't wander onto adjoining properties accidentally? Has FOP can get into that?
Yeah, we did, um, and part of the prior application is similar to like, you know, heritage lands, and it's a little, um.
Okay.
Metal brackets usually holding twenty-five feet and thirty feet off, it says, "Foundation line approaching." Uh, we discussed that prior, and that's the same, same thing.
Okay.
And if I'm going to put, I'll put it in a while.
Well. You still don't know them when you're wandering across that magical line on the earth where you don't belong.
You're gonna have warning buzzers. Any other questions, court members?
It still concerns me a little bit about not having a road proposed, a corridor, or how it would go through the campground or through the property, and we're almost landlocking this stuff in the back by approving this, and they have to come back and change the campground and.
Uh, that's typical, I mean, the idea is, we don't know where we're going for a road, and if, if there's no demand or, or that, it just doesn't make any sense if we, if they have, uh, the operations of their hands full up here, and if we knew we were building a road out there, I'd be the first one to jump up there and show you where we want to build it, but.
So it would be another application anyway, separate application, so.
Yeah.
That's a new one.
A new, yes, a separate new application, thank you. Okay, any other questions? And on that note. Okay, now we have to make the decision?
Don't look at them.
Being that the exhibits are at least complete?
Yeah, we, do we move?
We haven't moved, but this is complete.
I thought.
We have not.
We, we haven't moved whether it's complete or not.
Right.
I thought, we were gonna, we're gonna hear from the attorneys, uh, Ms. O'Connell, set us straight on this. We're gonna allow, uh, the applicant and, uh, Ms. Chow to weigh in briefly on this before we make a decision on whether it's a new application or not, or should we find this complete first and then go through that process?
So the first process is to, um, before you can find it complete, you need to decide if this is a continuing application that you already found complete, and is it still complete because of these new submissions?
Yeah.
Um, if, if you've done with your questions with the, um, applicant's agent, then my recommendation is that their attorney, the applicant's attorney, can address the narrow issue of if this is the same application, it's just modified. Um, attorney Chow should have been, have the opportunity to address the exact same issue. And then, um, as a typical procedure, the applicant will have a chance to.
Rebook, yeah.
And that should be it, no more sort of, of course, the board will have questions, so that, that can obviously be addressed as well to any attorney.
I would just like to request that in addition to the attorney's, could the planner make a brief statement concerning whether it is a new or probably a modified application?
And how will that differ from what Mr. Hamilton's gonna tell us?
I'm not a lawyer.
You're gonna make more good person in the room.
No comment.
Just, um, just Gary, can you provide us any criteria for what we weigh in, in determining whether this should be a new application or an amended, already filed application? Would you make that part of attorney presentation?
Yeah, and I, and I'm sure, um, both attorney Hamilton and attorney Chow will address here, what your perspective is on that, but, um, my, my memo for our last meeting addressed that, which, you know, basically concluded there really isn't anything that says you have to treat a modification or a change as a separate application. I think it comes down to a degree of what's been changed. Has the use been changed? Is there another ordinance involved, you know, things that will take it out of what's already before you?
The use has been changed somewhat, because now we have public access, which we never had before.
We can address that.
So that, those are the things that you'll weigh up, so based on the fact that as much you have completed application, it's been modified, what you're gonna have to weigh up, and so has, has those modifications made it a new application?
Any other questions? Okay, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Cynthia.
Cynthia. Can you be brief, Cynthia?
Yes, I can. Um, so I guess what I wanted to speak to was that I'm a landscape architect on the planner. And for over thirty-five years, I have created plans and taken them through the planning board process throughout the state of Maine. And I would say that rarely, if ever, does the plan that you initially begin with look a lot like the one that you end up with as a final plan. And that is because the planning board process is designed in order to get input from planners, from the planning board, from the public, from peer reviews. And oftentimes, those things, um, inform you to modify the plan. And that's exactly what has happened here, is that we heard from the public, and I think in your application and the presentation we made before, there were four really large areas of concern that we addressed, um, and the plan was modified in that way. But it is part of a process, and to say that this is an altogether new plan really shows, I think, um, a questionable understanding of the planning process. When doing the original plan in January, we were able to understand the site, where, where the entrance needed to be, we understood topo, we understood existing environmental conditions, we understood historical artifacts, we understood drainage, what was the septic capability, landscape, how effective are the buffers? And the idea that we needed a wellness component, and actually, the entire program has not really changed other than instead of RVs, cabins and tents, we now have camping tents and hirts and a third left. So all of those criteria that I just listed to you are, are really things that we knew by virtue of having already done the first plan. And by then working with the public and listening to the board, we were able to modify that plan using all that prior knowledge.
I, I think we understand that, that was well covered in our Zoom meeting, so.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add to, as I've been said before?
I just wanted to, um, kind of reiterate the fact that this actually, I think, has been a great planning process and has allowed, um, the creation of a much more appropriate plan than the plan that you originally saw in January. And that is the way that it should be, as a planning process in my mind, working very well.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton? Brief, please.
So I, I look at this question as a two-step. Is this a modification or is it a new application? The law that's applicable is found at Title One, Section three oh two, sometimes referred to as a general savings clause. And the lesson ordinance says something specific as to retroactivity, how things reach back, such as the more joinments been proposed, then, um, that general savings clause controls. Title One, Section three oh two says, "Once there's been an initial substantive review, which happened in April twenty twenty-one, then that application becomes pending, and it cannot be affected thereby as to new ordinances or amendments to it." We take the position that so is dead, the May twenty twenty, um, May twenty twenty-one amendments do not apply to this application. We've shown you from a good faith perspective that we've made out a best effort to comply with those ordinary amendments on the law, but it's not a requirement, because this is a pending proceeding. So then you ask yourself the first question, when did this proceeding stop being a pending proceeding? And I submit to you, that's a pretty hard question. Once you have done completeness review in March twenty twenty-one, you then do substantive review in, um, April twenty twenty-one. That's when that substantive review triggers the pending proceeding status on the Title One, Section three oh two.
Are you saying the completeness review?
The completeness review sprung you into the start of substantive review. And once you start any substantive review, even if, even whether you have even done completeness review, says one case, uh, decided by the law court, when you start your substantive review, that you have pending proceeding status. And I submit to you, that never stopped, and for you to determine that it stopped would be to do the very thing that several of you have spoken to, and how that you would penalize this applicant and set a precedent that would damage future applicants, feeling that they couldn't do responsive modifications to their plans lest a very smart attorney come in and say, "This is a new application." And so I just want to give you what you've heard tonight in very quick summary. First of all, Greg has walked through several, uh, discussions with the DDP as the recycling development activity. You can ask him to detail that at any time, or if you've already started in that process. The ordinance says you have to start into the permitting process, say you're federal, but it doesn't say you have to complete it. It says, "You make as a condition of any approval action, um, the requirement that you get your permits." So we'll have to get our permits, but I submit to you, all projects that I'm aware of that are, are relatively modest projects, uh, in scale, go through this process of starting the discussion with the DDP or the Army Corps of Engineers, and they don't finish it until generally the local review is already completed. Here we have no expansion. So the, the next test is, you could be kicked out if you truly had a new application. But I view that as applying in four sets of circumstances. Circumstance number one, change in use. Campground before, campground after, no change in use. This, this idea that we're allowing the public into a couple of facilities, changes the use, that's not what the ordinance says. It is, it is material to you, Mr. Chairman, but I submit to you, that's not a change in use. The second thing is, uh, whether you have an expansion. I will detail again why we've got a reduction, not an expansion. And it would be an expansion of the type that would kick you into a new review. As, as Ms. O'Connell said in response to, uh, Mr. Young's question, if you are kicked into an additional subdivision ru, review, for instance, it'd be hard to say that an application that didn't require subdivision review, that now requires subdivision review, it, it, it is not new, that, that would be tough. And, and note that the opponents, the people referring to the back, they're, they're suggesting that there's gonna be a subdivision. We don't know. The thing about these two very special applicants to us is they want to come home. It's the diaspora, the desire to return home, based upon DNA will make a difference. And if they can do that, other things will happen. They also need to establish their. They also need to establish their trac record, in my opinion, with this community and with the neighborhood, because people will feel better about that. So we're saying now retain land that's out of bounds for five years. The next test is, have we got a new applicant? Same applicant before, same applicant after? The last test is, do you have a different property? You actually had the entirety of the property before, and you have a reduced development on you. All of the same property, the property hasn't changed. The idea that there was a previously approved project that's going on, I think Mr. Johnson is being honest with the board and saying, yeah, it's there. And if we can tie in access, we should try to do that. But that's not right to hold for yet because you haven't decided whether this project can be approved. So from the case law, we know the planning board and the opponents can't change the legally pending status of an application outside of this framework. Your determination has to respect the legal rights of the applicant under Title I, Section 302, and be tethered to a logical framework. So what is that framework? You've seen the submittal checklist. And I count up no less than fifteen reductions in text described. Roadless, reduce. Grading, reduce. Domestic water demand, reduce. Subsurface system demand, reduce. Impervious on the site, reduce. Runoff on the site, reduce. Road lengths and widths for proposed driveways, parking and loading areas, reduce. Clearing for proposed landscaping, there's increased buffering, which reduces outside impact. Reduce light damage with updated lighting. Reduce length of excavation for utilities. Peak hourly and daily traffic, reduce. And fully updated traffic report of Diane Moravio, which I would ask you to carefully review. Do you have time with us? That says the level of service for four intersections. Three are level of service A before, level of service A after. The level of service goes down to P under the traffic system. You're the top level of service. And this project's not going to have any impact on that level of service A. It's only on the self-campdown road intersection that it's level of service B. And after the project, it's going to be a level of service B. Diane Moravio is a very experienced traffic engineer. She was with Sewell Company. And Sewell Company drew Diane Moravio and said, this traffic in fact does not require any GOC traffic. I'm almost done with the table. You've also got reduced impervious surfaces and updated stormwater post development plans and pre-impervious. Then the project description is Nadorck. And bottom of page eleven, we've reduced the size of the project by about two-thirds, from one fifty-four down to fifty-five units. Top of page twelve, we've reduced the number of users and eliminated all RVs, including no trailers, no truck campers, and no self-camping sites. Page twelve, in addressing impact of the environment, less dense day campsite, fewer people on the site, no generators, quiet hours to be enforced, no basketball courts, no outdoor lift ports, campfires to use smokeless fire effects such as solos. Firewater quality, pond, and multiple rain gardens will manage groundwater flows and quality. Finally, if you look at the plan comparison on page fourteen, it says, one fifty-four before, fifty-five now is modified. The moratorium petition fundamentally misleads the residents of the town of Tremont. It says you've got one hundred and seventy sites. I think you're going to find that twenty-five will not come forward.
We don't need to talk about the moratorium.
Well, the community wants to talk about the moratorium, I assure you. But I'll go on. Before, we had seventy-two RV sites, forty-two cabin sites, forty self-tending sites. Now we only have thirty-seven camping sites, tents, and eighteen outdoor rooms. Campground stores, same. Chicken buildings, same. Office building, it's now been moved to the existing farmhouse. We had before a rec building with an indoor pool, now a fitness and spa facility without a pool. The owner's lot, removed. Playground, same, but now a good picnic area and dog park. Sports court, the bathroom, now a multi-field. Laundry and vending building, bathroom and shower building, all removed. So this modification is just that, a modification of reduced scope, scale, and the same use. In fact, it's a smaller and better use, as Nadorck said. And as Mr. Johnson detailed in the submittal list, this is not an expansion, you could not consider this to be an expansion. The longstanding principle of good common sense for ordering planning board is if you're reducing the scale of the project, you're not expanding. That's not a new application. So based on the March 2021 completeness and start of substantive review in April 2021, this application has been and continues to be a pending proceeding or reviewed for purposes of Title I, Section 302. Unless you want to create a new rule for applicants in this community to penalize them for making responsive modifications, especially reductions to this scale, beyond even not having jurisdictional incentives in the circumstance of this proceeding, to find this to be a new application, you would penalize and certainly not incent applicants with this new application determination. I thank the board for the presentation.
Questions of Mr. Hamilton, board members? I do have one question, Andy.
Yes.
And it goes back to what I originally said. You mentioned several times, this project has the same use. Our definitions in the ordinance say, a use is a single activity occupying a lot. It may be recreational, residential, or any number of commercial activities. Okay. Now, we have public use of the cafe, the restaurant, the store, the fitness facility. To me, that's a different use. It's not the same use as you originally applied for.
I just have you look for the definition campground for a moment. And you and Mr. Chairman, just read that.
How are you doing? You hanging in there? Do you need a break or anything? Sorry, we haven't asked you. We're not used to all this attention, so.
Did you say campground?
What page? Okay, it's twenty-five in the land use ordinance. Okay, I'm there, Andy. What do you want to point out?
So if you just read that definition campground, I need to be refreshed.
Well, the definition of campground? Oh, the definition, okay. Yeah, the definition is, I thought you meant look at the, "Any area or tract of land to accommodate two or more parties in temporary living quarters, including, but not limited to tents, recreation vehicles, or other shelters."
Yep, that's what we're doing. Whether or not the public provided you a property is not determined by the use classification. Use classification is campground before. Use classification afterwards is a much smaller campground. My submission to everyone is we've gone from a large-scale polar campground size to something that's closer to a paramour type facility. And my submission to the board is, both are campgrounds and these ancillary uses, for which there may be some public use held now. Again, I wouldn't have you penalize an applicant for saying, we need to modify the concept around the business plan in order to be able to carry this off. There are trade and everything in that. But if you look for something important that says, if you go from a internal campground users to some elements of your ancillary facilities being public, that doesn't change the use classification. I'd go to the bat on that one. I'd litigate that one all the way through the conference.
Sure you would. Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Hamilton?
I would like the chance to respond.
You? Okay, Ms. Chow, I guess you're up.
So I'll start with the issue of new versus revised application and why that's important.
Can you stay closer to me? Because I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Of course.
I'm sorry.
Even if I'm there, so.
I'm sorry.
Is it too close? So Mr. Hamilton spoke about one MRS 302, and I won't go into that. And although that is the general rule, the court says that one 302 is a rule of construction. And so exactly as Mr. Hamilton says, that unless an ordinance requires otherwise, you have to apply the statute which says, pending proceeding happens when you've done your first substantive review. Right? That's the general rule that the statute applies. But the statute goes on to say, unless an ordinance says otherwise. And in this case, your ordinance says otherwise. It says otherwise very specifically in your land use ordinance under Article eight, Section D nine. Can I ask you if, in distributing my letter of today, did it also include the TRC report by Mark Bergeron? Can I ask that question?
Can you ask that? What specifically?
The reason I'm asking is that.
Well, if that letter has that in.
Does the letter include the TRC report, does it? I didn't see it.
No, it doesn't.
It was submitted today along? It submitted two arguments, this report. The planning board does have the TRC report?
CTR? TRC report.
It's a TRC.
It's not in the letter.
This is the report?
I'm sorry. I do have a copy of that, but at the end of your.
It was at the end of my submittal. I'm just asking if the planning board received a copy of that along with my letter.
No.
Because this issue goes to the argument that I was going to make. Can we make copies for the planning board? Would it be possible to do that?
I think that goes back to our threshold discussion earlier that these submittals that you made on the twenty-first were supposed to be for a meeting on the twenty-eighth if this application is deemed complete. And it's more germane to substantive review than.
I don't believe that I was, that the planning board issued any restriction on what it is that I could submit on the twenty-first. So I would object if this is not going to be allowed to be submitted to the planning board because it does go to my arguments, and I will be brief. But.
The argument as to whether this is a new application or not?
Yes, and the completeness of this as well. So I can continue, but.
Right, I think the issue is trying to limit the argument to what was on the agenda, which is whether or not this is a new application or a modification.
The agenda, which is outlined in Jesse's memo, includes the question of whether or not this application is necessarily deemed complete. And as part of that determination.
Once the determination is made, if it is considered to be a modified application, then whether or not the already completed application is still considered complete under those regulations. I think it's kind of a circular argument.
I'm simply asking that the materials that I submitted, the planning board allowed me to submit, be distributed to the planning board tonight. And I will continue, if you disallow that, but I will lodge my objection because I believe I'm entitled to have the planning board see the materials that I submitted. I was not, the motion that the planning board adopted did not limit what the submissions were due for. And I believe I should be allowed to speak briefly to the issues in Mr. Bergeron's letter, which do go to the threshold question of completeness and new versus old application. So if this isn't information that the board doesn't have before, when you gave me this deadline to produce it, I think that is a problem. So I will accept your ruling. I don't want to drag this on, but I.
Oh, I just want to make a clarification, Amy. They definitely accepted for the purpose of the submittals today was for the meeting on the twenty-eighth, and they would be presented for that.
I don't believe the planning board constrained when this material would be made available to them. And I was allowed to be heard on the August twenty-fourth. At the August twenty-fourth meeting, the board assured me that I would have an opportunity to address those threshold issues. And part of how I am doing that is in reference to a report where you are not allowing it to distribute to the planning board before they have to make that decision. So if that's your decision, that's your decision. But I'll lodge my objection.
Is there a reason you can't present that material without us having the report before?
I can do it orally, but it's, I believe it's a, I have an objection because you haven't seen it, so you have to take my word for it. But I don't understand why it can't be distributed to the planning board.
Amy, I think the one problem is most people haven't seen it. The applicant hasn't been given the opportunity to respond to it, and it wasn't part of the motion or expected that that would be submitted.
Because that's a technical document.
There's no, there's, there were no constraints on the kind of documents
Correct.
that were to be submitted. This is a technical document. It includes technical reviews.
For review at the substantive hearing, if that goes forward on the twenty-eighth. That was the purpose of the submittals by the twenty-first.
I've reviewed the motions that were made on August twenty-fourth. I did not see any such qualifier. And I believe I'm entitled, as another due process, to at least here, register the reasons why I came to the board if you're going to determine, make a completeness determination tonight. I should be allowed to address the board on those issues before you make that determination. So.
I mean, it's up to the board to decide. If you go back and look at the motion, the submittals that you were to make today, the applicant didn't have the ability to respond to them, so they were called a meeting on the twenty-eighth, not for. Today was limited to the issue that you argued last meeting, whether or not this was a new application or just a modification. And I think what you want to address is whether it's complete, which is not going to be part of a public hearing. That's part of something that the planning board looks through with the checklist that's not part of the public discussion.
Determination, I believe, that the planning board makes and when there are legal threshold issues that have to be decided, I believe that the planning board, we should hear the arguments regarding completeness that I have. Let me not, let me continue, if I can, on this issue of modification versus a new application. As I said before, the rule is generally, the statutory rule is generally, have you conducted substantive review after having done a completeness determination? And there is no doubt that there was a completeness determination done in March on the original January application, which looks very different from the submission materials and the overall project that was submitted on September fourteenth. And then the substantive review of that old application did begin in April. Now, Mr. Hamilton says the statute requires, fixes the pending status of that proceeding as of that date. And while that is true under the statute, statute then goes to say, but if an ordinance dictates otherwise, you have to follow your ordinance. And I would submit that your ordinance does actually very clearly submit otherwise. And it says at Article eight, Section D nine, that an application is pending only after it has been determined to be complete by the reviewing authority. I would submit to you that this completeness determination or discussion that you've had tonight would not be necessary if you had already done a completeness determination that would apply to this application. In other words, yes, you did a completeness determination on an application or on a bunch of materials that were submitted to you. I would submit that's a different project, a new project. But without getting into the semantics, you did a completeness determination on that. And then you determined that whatever was being submitted on the fourteenth of September required a new completeness determination, which only makes sense because the differences in this project now are so fundamental that you need to. in this project now are so fundamental that you need to go back and look at whether all of the materials are complete so that you can begin substantive review. So your ordinance says, if you've ordered a new completeness determination and you've done it, then whatever it is that is being submitted, call it an application, call it submission materials, whatever that was submitted does not become pending until, unless and until the completeness determination is done. You have not determined the September 14th completeness, submission materials to be complete yet. I understand you are about to do that, or you're at least about to discuss that. But as a result of that, your ordinance says that whatever was submitted on September 14th actually is pending only after you determine it to be complete. And that means that the May 5th, 2021 campgrounds do apply to whatever these submission materials, whatever the 239 pages that were submitted, have, that they apply to those, they apply to that application, okay? Now with respect to, what's even more important is something, Mr. Chairman, that you referred to. You referred to a section in the land use ordinance that references before an application can be deemed to be complete, whether the applicant has consulted with the appropriate state and federal agencies, which indeed Mr. Johnson has done with respect to a stormwater permit, okay? But that section goes on to say it's all appropriate state and federal agencies. And not only must that contact be made, but evidence must be supplied in the application itself that that has been done. Now, I would submit that Mr. Johnson has done that, or whoever prepared these materials, has done that with respect to the stormwater permit. But it has not done that with respect to whether or not the Site Location and Development Act is implicated here, and whether permitting by DEP under the site location law is required. And the reason that's important is there's no evidence in this application that DEP has been approached or been requested to determine whether site location law applies. And although I've heard that there's informal discussions going on with DEP, it's not my understanding that this applicant believes it is subject to the site location. And the reason that's important is because there, if the site location law is applicable to this application, then it has many implications for many more stringent standards that apply that the planning board will, should take into consideration, which may affect the ultimate layout and plan for this project. And one of the reasons that the site location law does apply to this project is that the site location law does say that when it's looking at acreage, you look at large developments, and one of the triggers is whether you have 20 acres of development occupied by the proposed development. Another is whether you have three acres at least of impervious surface. And the site location law says that when you have a common scheme of development, which is exactly what we have here in this phased plan, the reason why the first 11-unit campground is relevant here is because it is part of the overall common scheme of development. The applicant has said, we are partners with the 11-unit development. There is a website that is unified that describes these two campgrounds, coming soon with either near you, it hasn't been approved yet, this one, but the Canadian Wilderness Lodge website refers to a resort that has, that refers to both of these units with shared, for both of these campgrounds, with shared amenities. It's a common scheme of development. And so either by itself, I think there's no, there's no coincidence why the shrunting nature of this project from 43 acres to either just under 20 or 18 acres was likely an attempt to avoid the need for slow permit. But what has to happen is this yellow lot, which is the first campground, needs to be considered as part of the common scheme of development to determine whether you're over the 20 acres. And you are when you do that. The TRC report, which you don't have in front of you, which I urge you to read, says that the acreage that is being proposed for development here actually is estimated to exceed 20 acres all on its own. And certainly when it adds in this parcel to the east that is already being developed as an 11-unit campground, it meets the 20-acre trigger. I would also submit to you that the picnic tables and trails on the northern 20 acres that have been referred to, that's part of the development, that's part of the campground development. And so that acreage needs to be considered, and therefore DEP needs to be requested and consulted regarding site location law. What that does is that keys in a number of other agencies that also would have jurisdiction over this project and review authority for things like wetlands, for things like endangered species like the northern long-eared bat, and for things like vernal pools. And one of the reasons I would submit to you, this TRC report outlines, is that this application cannot be deemed complete without a site-specific wetland inventory and study done. What the applicants have done here, and I'm going now specifically to 8.3H, which says that the location of wetlands and other important features, that it's deemed complete because that has been identified. And all that the application, the September 14th application does is it says that under the national wetland inventory, there aren't wetlands that would come within jurisdiction. The TRC report, Mr. Bergeron, who is a professional engineer, has stated that without an onsite specific wetland survey done during the time of year when hydrophytic vegetation is present, you cannot determine whether or not there are wetlands present that are subject to protection under the Natural Resources Protection Act by the DEP. And there's no evidence that DEP has been consulted with respect to an onsite wetland survey. Similarly, with respect to vernal pools, although there was evidence that in July, someone from DEP went out to determine whether that was a significant vernal pool, and it was a man-made depression, there was no evidence that a survey was done during the time of year when vernal pools and vernal pool habitat would be present, which is not in July and is not in November, but is in the spring months. The TRC report outlines all of this in detail, which is why I believe it's imperative that you review it prior to making a determination that this application is complete. Furthermore, the TRC report refers to sewage disposal, and that is another completeness issue here. 8.4A says that the application has to include estimated demand for water supply and sewage disposal, together with the location and dimensions of all water supply and wastewater disposal, and evidence of their adequacy for the proposed use. Now, what was supplied here was a soil scientist's opinion that there is adequate drainage in areas on this site for sewage disposal. The proposed capacity for this campground requires an engineered, a fully engineered design that must be approved by the Department of Health and Human Services. There's no evidence that has been submitted in this application that DHHS has been consulted with or requested with respect to an engineered design for a septic disposal system. And so without that information, not only can you not deem this application to be complete at this point, but you, but the applicant must show an engineered design of a septic disposal system. You can't just say, we can do this, we have the soils. It has to show the dimensions and the location and the adequacy for sewage disposal. Your own land use ordinance and site plan review ordinance requires a septic, a sewage disposal system that meets state rules. And so your own ordinance, under your own ordinance, you have to apply that, and this application can't be considered to be complete without that. The same goes for water supply, although there was a reference to water supply. The TRC report refers to this being a public water supply, designated likely to be a public water supply under the name...
You really are getting down. We're getting into substantive pieces.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to mention as well. It seems like some of these things you're talking about...
It's the next meeting, whatever we get to.
...are the next step in our process. And what we want to know is your argument about completeness or not. I don't believe, or not completeness, whether it's a new application or not. You're dealing with issues that we consider farther down the line.
Okay, well, let me frame the issue. Because your ordinance, your land use ordinance, says that an application has to include evidence that the state agencies that you've been talking about have been requested or consulted when it's appropriate to do so. And because this application does not include that evidence, especially with respect to the site location law, and I don't go into all the other ones, you can read my letter, you can agree or disagree, but I believe, we believe that as a result of that, this application is not complete because it doesn't include that evidence. And as to whether this is a changed application, or a new application, or a modification, you're exactly right that what is being proposed here is a change in use. It is a change in use when a restaurant or cafe that was supposed to be incidental to a campground, because campgrounds do serve food, or they make provision for food, to campground guests. And maybe an occasional passerby or member of the public also gets a cup of coffee. It's an entirely different use, however, if this becomes a year-round cafe or restaurant that has to be registered and have a food license, perhaps a liquor license, it's got 20 seats, and the applicant has already mentioned that there are no campground users there at that time. So it becomes an entirely separate principal use, I would submit, and not something that's just incidental to the campground because the campers aren't even there anymore. This is a year-round use that's being offered as a restaurant to local people in the winter months. That's a different use. That's a change of use. That was not proposed in the original application. Similarly, a fitness center that maybe they haven't worked out the details about membership or fees. A fitness center open to locals or members of the public in the winter months is a different use. It's no longer incidental to or accessory to the campground use. So for that additional reason, I believe this is, whether you call it a new application or a changed application, for whatever reason you want to call it, it is so changed and different that it is not pending until you make your completeness determination, whether that's tonight or at some later date. We believe it should be at a later date.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Chow? Anybody? Brett?
Maybe.
I know you're dying. You say something.
Well, the common scheme of development, which I think is a predicate to the slow to applicability, I wasn't on the planning board the first time around for the, I guess I'll call it the smaller campground, for lack of a better way to describe it. At the time, but as I understand it, at the time that was permitted, the applicants didn't own the other land. They didn't own it. So...
Doesn't matter, says the...
Okay, so tell me why it doesn't matter.
I'll tell you.
Because you could have, you could have a purchase that's 20 years apart. Like, what's the temporal relationship that's required to show that it's a common scheme? Because at the time they permitted that first one, they had no idea whether that land was ever even going to be available for sale.
That's because the Site Location and Development Law actually says you can have non-contiguous parcels.
Yep.
Not in common ownership, but that are used in a particular way. They can be owned by different LOCs. I mean, that happens all the time. But a common scheme of development is evidenced by a plan that takes place on contiguous or non-contiguous parcels or lots in the same immediate vicinity and exhibits characteristics of a unified approach, method, or effect, such as unified ownership, management, or supervision, sharing of common equipment or labor, or common financing. We have almost all of those things.
But the time, the time has no, like, the time between the first permitting...
Time between ownership does not matter. The point is, the DEP is interested in large developments. And regardless of who owns them, if they're operated as a common scheme, then the land use and the stormwater impacts and all of the things, like cutting, where are you cutting things down? That matters a lot to DEP.
And then the second...
If you have to look at it globally, regardless of who owns it.
Okay, so then the second predicate would be, it's got to be 20 acres or more, it has to be.
Correct. And I would suggest that even if you don't apply the one and a half acres to the east that this 11-unit campground occupies, you already have 20 acres of development on this parcel alone. You have 20 acres by our engineers' estimate, based on their own submissions, and you have 20 acres, especially if you include the walkways and the picnic areas that are going to be used by this campground. That's part of the development area. So it absolutely is triggering, triggering slow to review. And there's no evidence that DEP has been approached for them. In fact, the evidence suggests that the applicant has tried to avoid review under this law.
And so, just, you'll have your time to talk.
One last comment. I mean, just a comment for everyone. You know, we, thank you for that. You know, we got to look into it, I don't know. But we have in the past, we realized that oftentimes applicants need to go and get state approval. And so a lot of times what we'll do is we will condition completeness on that approval. You know, so theoretically, we could, that's something we've done in the past. You said, look, we know you need to go to the state to get whatever, and it doesn't make sense to hold up. It makes more sense to have the processes run concurrently rather than just to wait till all those other approvals are done. So I'll just throw that out there. But yeah.
And I don't disagree with that. What I'm focusing on is actually specifically with respect to completeness.
Yes, well...
Before an application is complete, you have to show that you at least requested of the agencies who are likely to have permitting authority, hey, are we subject to you? And you need to show evidence of that in the application for it to be complete. I'm not suggesting you have to get final slow to approval before you can even begin your work.
Okay. If I record that.
Yeah, I'll just make one comment on the use, though. You know, again, I think there was a little bit of discussion about public use the first time around. I think I saw some work, I don't know if it was going to happen or not.
And they denied it.
Okay.
They didn't know it was going to happen.
Yeah, I mean, this is interesting to me. You know, I know there's a lot of different opinions in the public about this, but my sense is that the applicants are trying to make it available because people in the public might want to use that. And so if that, to me, if that was something that was going to, you know, was going to adversely impact the application, again, you're sort of, the incentive you're creating is for people not to make things available to the public on a year-round basis. That's crazy to me, but I'll just, I'll just say that.
But in that case, shouldn't they actually be applying for that instead of saying it's on the campground?
I don't know. I mean, the campground on the corner from me, the pool's open to the public. If it's on a separate application, I doubt it.
It was probably approved long before the ordinance.
I don't know.
Was it? I don't know.
This ordinance has been around for quite a while. I don't know.
Anything else?
No.
Any other question, Ms. Chow?
I was going to answer questions.
Okay.
I would just, I'm sorry, I'll sit down. But I would again make a plea before the court makes any kind of determination about completeness, I would ask that they can read the TRC report and that it be made available.
Mr. Hamilton, would you like to respond?
I would. So there's three really important points for me to just newly remind the board of. First is, you got to take the overall record of this long-pending... First is, you got to take the overall record of this long pending procedure. You can't just take the pieces you like and leave off the rest of the record and say, "That record doesn't matter." Why is that important? As Mr. Johnston has shared with this planning board tonight, and several times previously, I suspect, when something is already in the record, it uses the word "same" because it's already in the record. The second important point, this is done in Bar Harbor, it's done in Mount Desert, it's done in Tremont, it's done in Southwest Harbor, it's done in Bangor. It's done by four planning boards throughout the land. Representations of professionals as to what they've done as part of the application review are part of the record. I'm going to ask Mr. Johnston some questions. He's going to give me short answers so he can get through this tonight promptly. But all the questions that Ms. Chow raised are going to be answered in just two seconds. The third major point is, this is not a new completeness review. I negate that proposition altogether. This is a confirmation of a completeness review that already happened in March 2021. And then you started substantive review in April 2021. And Mr. Chairman, I want to remind you and members of the board, you said the May 2021 land use changes were not going to affect this application. You said that because we were pending as of April 2021. And we don't lose that pending status just because Ms. Chow makes, you know, really creative, smart legal arguments. But those legal arguments don't hold water, and I'm going to show you why. First of all, this referenced Article 8, Section D9 in the ordinance. States that an application can only be deemed pending after a completeness determination is made. That's what happened between March 2021, when you made a completeness determination, and when substantive review started. But the law court has specifically negated that you have to have completeness review in all instances to start substantive review. And in a case that mirrors this one, it talked about the fact that you may have had an original completeness review, you may have done substantive review, you may have modified the application, you may have come back for confirmation of completeness. That's what's happening to ours. The, the next thing is that that standard is different than Title 1, Section 302. And I, I dispute the claim that Attorney Chow is trying to make, that the law court says the Title 1, Section 302 doesn't apply when a community is more specific. Yes, as to retroactive status, that an ordinance is intended to have retroactive status. But what the law court has said is, whether it's a municipal special savings clause or the statutory general savings clause, the key is when did substantive review start? And that's what all the case is talking about. You started substantive review of this project. And there is not a darn thing that's changed the status of this as a pending procedure. Now, let's get into specifics. Mr. Johnston, have you, or any of the professionals you've engaged on this project, talked to the Army Corps of Engineers? Yes or no?
Yes.
Has anybody on your team, or have you talked to anybody like Ken Libby or Jessica Damon at the DEP about the application of the natural resources protection? Correct. Yeah, has there been any discussion about the site location and development?
Definitely has been.
So, the bottom of page seven, at footnote seven, I think we're talking about the task to deal with, the whole notion of what's been reviewed on this project. So less than 20 acres being developed. Let's do the math. Did you consider the prior project, even though you're not required based upon this project application? I think the board has been pretty clear on this. That prior project, one and a half acres, was previously permitted and approved, and construction started on that project, right?
Correct.
So, so the approvals are just for purposes of naming law. But you still said from a common scheme perspective, just to get Mr. Whitten's questions and Ms. Chow and her response to that, you've considered that one and a half acres with respect to the 20 acre threshold. Is that correct?
Correct. One and a half and 18 is 18 and a half.
One and a half and 18 is 18 and a half. Now, are you going out of your way to avoid the site law? Or has the applicant team instructed you, if you can keep the cost down on this project, please try to do that?
Well, just that it doesn't pick up down much later. It's been reduced based on the public influence of the board.
Ms. Chow said TRC has estimated that the overall project will exceed 20 acres. Have you done your own calculations? And are they estimates? Are they calculations?
They're calculations.
Have you conducted any weapons review with agency officials?
So you'll find on page, and I would say that I wanted to do a fact check, I know Andy's going to keep it short, but...
No, go ahead.
The weapons were delineated in the prior applications, you'll remember, were delineated by a certified soil scientist on site. That's why we saw the flag in there in the site law.
Yeah, I can't hear you either.
The weapons on site, the weapons, they weren't delineated by a licensed professional.
I still can't hear you. You're talking to the site community.
The, the weapons were delineated by a certified soil scientist on site.
Still doing it.
Just take your time. We're, yeah.
Slow down.
We're not in the...
The weapons were delineated by a certified soil scientist.
That's the hard one. Certified soil scientist is the tricky.
On site.
Yeah.
They returned several times to evaluate the distance of prone pools, not only last year, but this year. Then this year, returned to the DEP to confirm more areas, and we have a letter from him on page 26. So first, let's be clear, the weapons were delineated on the face of the earth, not using the national weapons inventory, which is claimed. There are no conclusions on the fire plans, and the moist environmental services delineated those weapons, and spoke to them on, on some of the other hearings. The other thing quickly I just wanted to address, the size of the leach fields is certainly addressed. They, not only they're shown by scale, that's why you get a plan by scale, right? You can measure them. Also, the report under page 162, moist letter tells you, they're 35'7". So the claim that we haven't filled a completeness requirement because we haven't told you the size of them, is just that somebody hasn't found them in the application. I'll, I'll leave it at that. So those two points I wanted to go. Sorry, let's digress any.
No, no, it's fine. It's certainly the case that attorneys can hurry technical consultants, and maybe that's what happened with Mr. Bergeron review. I've known directors of the Land Bureau of DEP several generations back before Mr. Bergeron. I know Mr. Bergeron, and me and I had a chance to review the details of the application. Sewage disposal requirements, any discussion with the Department of Health and Human Services? And what is the general cadence for how you talk with the Department of Human Services? What as to wastewater and as to drinking water?
Sure. So we've talked at length because we'll need to register as public water supply, DHHS. We've consulted on a number of setback issues, and how that would be ruled based on the damage that we've had with that stuff with DHHS. And just like the ordinance provides, those permits are generally sought active. The approval, and that's why the ordinance calls for that. And the argument that the agencies haven't been contacted, it's not really true, even for considering the idea of slow. We have met, I'm going to say, three occasions, we both talked about slow. Also, you have a letter in there from the DEP, it is the same agency. You can't say that we haven't talked to the agencies in reference to the project, and you have a letter from that agency in your binder. So I would submit, there's evidence of that there for completeness.
How about dangerous species of water?
You have in your binder a letter from the Department of Conservation. I don't know, I, I did not receive a letter that Ms. Chow was referencing of the textual review. I would like to receive a copy of that, but I didn't. We have consulted with the Department of Conservation, inland fisheries and wildlife. They have further given us reports on just the same issues she raised as facts. So I submit there's evidence in the record for completeness.
I've seen those in your binder.
So have you, have you checked in with the Maine National Areas Program and the Maine Natural Preservation Office?
Those letters are in, in the binder.
Okay. So you have in fact checked with state and federal agencies, both the Army Corps and all the state agencies of the nation.
We understand what permits will be following the project, and I think the record shows that we have contacted them.
Okay. New York has, this question of Operation Wintertime, is it fair to say that this applicant doesn't yet know market demand for either the cafe or for the fitness center? And that's a question to be determined?
That is true.
So who do you think would be impacted by five to 10 yoga class participants or a few breakfasts in the winter?
That's a rhetorical question.
Come on, Andy.
Come on, Andy. Get real. You pushed that a little hard.
Relative to that, the restaurants, cafes, and the recreation center, fitness center will all identify on the January plan, so none of these are new uses. And uses in your ordinance, it's not determined whether it's a public or a private user, it's just the use. And so, the uses themselves have not changed.
Campground doesn't exclude the use as described, and I'm going to submit that the people who come to a campground, unfortunately, they're public.
Did you say unfortunately?
In summary, they're public. I think we have modification of existing applications to the longstanding pending procedure of its own market, and we have a complete application for it.
Okay. Board members, any more questions before we move on? Jeff?
Nope.
Lawson, no. Brett?
I see the guy.
You're thinking, you're thinking. Well, come on, say it.
No, I know what I'm going to do, so it doesn't matter.
Mr. Chairman, I think the board's order is...
Probably need to break.
Come on, buddy.
Okay. What do you say, till next month?
So moved.
You ever come in for a party and you just do that?
No, I've done a lot of different types of stuff, and I know you get a break.
You want breaks and you're...
Where you have...
Everybody else is, everybody else is so stressed. Because it's just stressful.
Those, the board reporters amaze me. I've watched them for years. It's just like, how do you keep up with this stuff?
No, they got a table.
Well, I know, they can go back on it, but still.
Yeah, Brett, Brett, yeah, don't be there the first time. Take a bathroom in the morning. Take a piss in the three hours.
You know, a lot of times they're working.
No, they're working.
Everybody else is so stressed. Because it's just stressful. Those, the board reporters amaze me. I've watched them for years. It's just like, how do you keep up with this stuff?
No, they got a table.
Well, I know, they can go back on it, but still.
Yeah. Brett, Brett, yeah, don't be there the first time. Take a bathroom in the morning. Take a piss in the three hours.
You know, a lot of times they're working.
No, they're working.
That's why I'm nodding.
This isn't really that one.
Yeah, yeah.
I just was going to say, can I resign right now? Oh, it's just too bad. Oh, thanks.
I know who you are.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. I don't even know who I am sometimes.
Should I make a pitch on behalf of the conference of the House of Lords? Everyone fell off their surf, they're amazed.
You know, we're going to need two more members.
Why? Who's going to happen?
Two people that have two strings attached, two persons with unexcused absences, and a lot of people that are chilling up anyway, huh? Hey, he's on the board, too. So what? He's a person, he's become a nominee, and you can say, "Okay."
Oh, really?
That's right. And it was chair, he had one chair that he...
I don't even think he has one.
Don't. He doesn't, he doesn't have one.
Thanks for...
It's because he just takes up a seat.
They still want me to...
So the bylaws do say that if people from the boards and committees don't want to be part of it, you could go to the public. And with six and seven people chilling up all the time, I don't know, I think 11 or 10 are in it anyway.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we need more people, but unless they're engaged, people who are curious and want to...
Somebody did apply for Robyn's place, and she has to be appointed by the select. Yeah, that's the procedure.
I would love to have more women, so...
Yeah, well, she's a woman, as far as I know.
We can make some of them.
I'm not going to touch that one.
Yeah, yeah. These things, that's a loaded question. Third round, like, they're going to make a show.
That's the way, that's the way they were described to me.
There we go, there we go.
Are we ready again, or?
I'm ready.
I think somebody looked at that.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Oh, I think...
Oh, I was ready.
Brett's not ready. You know, murders in our buildings are here tonight. You guys watch that? Hm? Murders in our building, so...
Nope.
Sounds really...
Steve Martin, somebody got family movie.
It's not a movie, it's a series. Well, it's funny, it's, it's Steve Martin, Martin Short.
I don't think you saw this.
And, and, he's like a mystery singer.
Who?
It's like a mystery, right? You try to, it's a mystery.
It's kind of a mystery, but it's a comedy, and it's like, there's all kinds of ghosts up here.
What can I think of? Selena, Selena...
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah. It's like Martin Short, and, yeah.
That was not like the first person. One of these things is not like the other.
It's hilarious. I think it's on, it's on one of the streaming services, Hulu or something. Okay, we ready?
Ready.
Ms. Chow, you know, raising your hand.
I'm not here, but...
Oh, Greg.
Should we wait for...
Yeah, let's wait for Greg. Sorry, folks. Couple of Gregs. Okay, any more questions before we move on to motion, a motion? Okay? Or none? I'll take a mo, I'll take a motion to find whether this, say, land...
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry.
Hey! Hey, that got our attention.
I'm going to wait, but I would like to just be heard on the record very briefly.
Didn't want to have Andy want to be on record very briefly, too.
Hold on. The, the, the deal was Andy would go first, you would respond, and then Andy would respond.
Thank you.
Okay, but based upon...
Isn't that correct? Ms. O'Connor?
I think she has an objection for purposes of...
I just said, I just said to put it on the record.
Oh, you, you, oh, oh.
For preservation, I need to put it on the record.
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'll be brief.
Please.
I, I would, I would like to register an objection to the testimony of Mr. Johnston substituting for what, what should have been in the application. The ordinance requires that the application itself has to include evidence that all appropriate state and federal agencies have been requested to determine if those permits are necessary. That was not in the materials that we were given to review, and so I believe that the board should still require Mr. Johnston to document evidence in the record in writing for that application before it's deemed complete.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say in 30 seconds?
Here we go.
I think because the record of this application includes the testimony before the board, I think Mr. Johnston's already done that, but I think it's helpful for the board and to be just as far as for Greg to provide details of that in going forward as part of substantive review on 20 acres.
Thank you. I did find some of the documents that... I did find some of the documents that, uh, Mr. Johnston referred to in the binder.
They are there. And you have one from the agency MDEP which regulates SLODA. So the agency is in there and you have the other agencies are also in there.
I'll entertain a motion to, uh, find, uh, the site plan review application for Acadian Wilderness Lodge Campground, either modified or a new application.
Want to move evening along, I, I, I will move that to new application.
Do I hear a second?
No.
That's not a second. Uh, hearing no second, uh, the motion fails. Okay.
I mean, I, I'll say, I was thinking about this earlier today and I wrote down five things that I thought, um, pointed to it being a continuation of a pending application. And they tracked exactly what Mr. Hamilton had said. I had same applicant, same parcel of land, not an enlargement of the land. Because I, I think there was a case somewhere where someone tried to bootstrap another piece on and say it's the same application. It's not, they're not doing that here. I think it is the same use. I think the discussion about, you know, maybe some public use in the wintertime or whatever is kind of a red herring and some noise, it doesn't really, it's not really at the heart of the matter. Um, and I think it, um.
Can I stop you just for a second? Yeah. I appreciate what you're saying, but maybe we should have a motion first and then.
I'm explaining what I think.
Yeah, okay.
And then other people can react to it and then see if we can get to a motion.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
That's, and I, and I also, my, another bullet I had was it otherwise reflects, um, you know, the planning process. And it's kind of what you'd expect. And, uh, you know, I'd said earlier, I felt like I'm always thinking about what, you know, what are we incenting or what are we encouraging? And I feel like, as I look at the, what's been changed, everything that's changed here, like sort of highlighted all things in the checklist, the things you would expect to change if there was give and take in a plan. Uh, and with all of those other items being the same, um, I feel like it is, uh, and, and we did have that completeness determination. So it triggers that, the, the pending piece and the land use ordinance. I, I just do think on balance, it's, um, it's the same app, it's, it's a modification of, of an application.
So would you like to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'll move that it is to, uh, find that this is a modification of a pending application.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the table to find that this is a modified application and not a new application. Is that correct?
Yep.
Any discussion, Jeff?
I, I, the only issue I really have with is the public access. And, and we wrestled with this earlier on and, uh, we were concerned earlier on that it was just going to be trails available and that can cause some concerns. And there was much more minor issues early in this application about public access. And the applicant made it perfectly clear that wasn't happening. Now, public access has become a bigger, bigger piece. And I do feel there's a change of use, a use with a small U, in that this has got a, you know, far more public appearance in public traffic. And I didn't hear discussed that it's just going to be wintertime, it's going to be public access year round. And it just changes the whole, what the facility is, it becomes more commercial in a different way.
Yeah, I definitely agree, Jeff, that it's a change. And that, like, it has evolved in response to, um, all the plans that happened in the last months. And, but I'm struck by your certain language about like the small U versus big U. And then it does feel like it's a change in what's going to happen on the site. But as it pertains to whether or not it's a application, a new application to the planning board, that sort of capital U use, which is you could camp ground, it's still a campground, that to me stays the same.
We do wrestle with that wonderful language in our applicable zoning code of light commercial activity and it just, and I know we have problems with that legally and the way it's written and so forth. But it is a language that there's a common sense that comes in here. There's, there's a reasonable list that comes in here. And then we've increased what we were wrestling with earlier. We're now going along with something that's dramatically even larger as far as public use. And that's what I'm trying to point out.
Yeah, I, you know, I understand what you're saying as well, Jeff, but I, maybe this is my own personal view, well, it's obviously my personal view. I just think about myself, when I'm, am I really going to be motivated to go hiking on like a, you know, campground on the backside? I, I, I don't know, it just doesn't have an attractiveness. It's not like a, a great, I'm not saying, you know, I'm just.
It's the best trail.
You know, I mean, we live in a Katy National Park and you're, you know, are you really going to, going to hike over there? We walked it, I mean, it's probably going to be pretty buggy, not great views, I don't know. It just doesn't feel like a place that a lot of people are going to flock to hike. Um, that's just, you know.
But they might be attracted to the pool, fitness center and rest.
I, maybe. It's, I got to tell you, it's, it's, it's the quiet side for a reason in the winter, uh, year round.
Year round.
Well, also, I mean, like even with the, like the cafe and the fitness center being open to the public, let's expand that for twelve months a year, even though they haven't committed to that. Even if it is, I still feel, well, I haven't looked at exactly the numbers, but it's going to be a lot less traffic than the originally proposed, um, campground with the RVs. And so, which is also the public, it's just like the public's spending the night instead of, in addition to using the pool. And.
Yeah, but you're weighing it against itself.
Right, because right now I'm trying to determine if it's a revised applic, like if it's part of the same application and it feels like it is because the, or it's a reduced scope, reduced impact on traffic, reduced impact on.
I mean, I'm also, I, I feel like, you know, if that's what triggers the new use, then you're disincenting people from making things available to the year round public. And that's, I, I don't know, it just doesn't feel, you know, it's pretty, there's not a lot of places to get a coffee around here in February. Yeah, so I, I, I don't know. I, like I said, I, I use the term noise, I just feel unbalanced, it's just not enough for me to hang my hat on and say it's a new, it trips them up and I got to pay a new application fee. And in this case, maybe even, you know, be barred by the, whatever's going on elsewhere. So I, that's just where I came down.
Greg, I have a question for you. Public use needs more traffic than just a campground. Is that included in the traffic calculations? I thought I saw.
Ben, it includes that.
It was. And how did you estimate the public use when it's a big unknown?
Uh, based on the per acreage of the building and the number of seats, um, you can determine how many users are and there are I T E manual, um, categories for light bakery good type areas for that sort of estimation. So the answer to the question, yes, it was included, um, and, and the estimates, just as I said.
And the I T E charts basically say for a fitness center, expect X amount of daily trips.
Exactly, and it, it is in a report sheet. I might, what would be generative about a public visit at as well as the cafe.
Do you think I cross-examine, Greg? You should have seen Danny and Morbido asking Greg questions. He's very conservative.
Thanks, Andy. Okay, any more questions? Okay, we have a motion second on the table to find that this is a modified application, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, three to one. So the next thing, can we find this application? We need a motion to either find the application complete or incomplete.
Are there any conditions, is there any, I mean, let's park the SLODA thing for a second. Is there anything else that's, that's not done at the DEP or the wells or anything? Like sometimes we have conditions for that.
Yeah, main drinking water program.
Is that, did we talk?
The wells haven't, have they been drilled?
No, well, they haven't been drilled.
So I, we always make that a condition, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's always conditional, uh, approve, our approval's always conditional upon that. As well as according to the ordinance, other, other, uh.
I think that it was easy to follow, the, easy to find the items, which is impressive on application of this house here and this, this borough. And the pieces seem to be there. I think, I think we should, you know, I think it's prudent for us to point out and maybe per, I think Andy suggested or offer, have, uh, have Greg submit a response. And I think, though I haven't fully read through, um, Amy's letter from today, like that's part of the process. It's like, the public made comments for today, the applicant will respond to that. So that when we review the whole thing, we can see and maybe, and that's another opportunity for the applicant to say, yes, these are the state agencies that we've spoken to and this is the status of the conversations.
Which, which condition was that in particular that, that, or which, um? Cause you, I mean, we, we could make a motion to, um, find a complete subject to.
Clarification of the, this paragraph? Everybody mind their.
Yeah, I know.
Check all the boxes and I think that, that in fairness, we haven't, I haven't read the technical document that was raised on the floor and certainly we'd be prepared to speak to that if we had a chance to review that.
Well, I was trying to figure, you know, attorney Chow hooked on to, you know, it's not just a, you know, you need to show evidence that you contacted and applied with any applicable state agencies.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe that's.
Is that SPO mark or are you land use order?
Land use order, it's, uh, uh.
Oh, it's the L.
A D A.
It's the L.
Right.
Huh, okay.
But it's not really part of our checklist.
Yeah.
I sort, I feel comfortable, like it exists in the letter from attorney Chow. The applicant can respond to that.
And we deal with it at substantive review?
I guess that's my, uh, yeah, that's my recommendation. And, and, and in part because I also feel, I feel somewhat.
According to.
Satisfied by Greg's testimony and, uh, letters from the DEP and the other agencies that are in, in our package.
See, the final sentence in this says, final approval will be given conditionally upon receipt of these permits as they are required.
Yeah, 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 okay, so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll recover, even if we went all the way through.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Substantive review instead of approved.
Spelt into the, it's spelt into the.
If it needs SLODA approval, there still needs a, so it's SLODA approved.
If we do ever get to approving this, we have to be very clear about what conditions I think to include things like that.
Right, although I think, I mean, the way I read that is that even if we just rubber stamp it, are, not that we would ever dream of doing that, I don't even know what that would look like at this point. But, um, the, the, you know, that they still, like it doesn't dissolve them from.
Correct, correct, that's right.
Permitting requirements.
I think it's complete as well.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to find the application for Acadian Wilderness Lodge Campground, or Acadian Wilderness Campground. No, yeah, Acadian Wilderness Lodge Campground.
Wait, I'll second. Okay, motion is second on the table to find the application for Acadian Wilderness Campground complete. Uh, any discussion or further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, four zero. Okay, well, let's go home, guys, hold on.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
Are we thinking about a peer review and a new?
Oh, that's the other thing, yes, thank you, I even wrote that down here and we got to.
And are we thinking about a site visit again?
I, I don't really need a site visit again. I didn't find the last one very fruitful, actually. But peer review, I think we should get a peer review on the stormwater plan, management plan and, uh.
Traffic.
Yeah, I have an engineer look at the traffic too. Anything else?
Do you remember what? Do we have any peer, do we ever get the peer review part in the spring?
Yes.
Yes. But, but the whole plan has changed.
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember, like, did we have both of those things checked in the spring?
We only have the stormwater done in the spring, I believe. Did we have this?
We have traffic too, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And, uh, I don't know, have somebody look at the hydrology too?
Yeah.
Can one engineer do all that? Or do we have to have separate people, you think, Jesse?
Is Greg Johnson available? He's a pretty popular.
All I would say is that our applicants have paid the numbers times into various peer reviews and so, um, you know, if we can stay as focused as possible, we'll.
And I don't want to discourage Mark and Jeff from getting more information, if it's like no more information's almost helpful. But I, I guess my, I would just observe that like if we have. Okay, I guess the question, like, do we trust the applicant's analysis? I guess that's the, the question, like.
I'm sure it's, it's perfect, but, uh, I would like to have an engineer look at it. It's period, we do this, did this in the spring. It's a different stormwater management plan, let's have somebody look at it. Chances are it won't take that long, I'm guessing. And, uh, as far as the traffic and, uh, hydrology, you know, I could go either way on that. I think it'd be a good idea and frankly, the traffic, I don't think will take them long. They'll just look at what Greg has done and check the manual probably. I don't know, any other discussion? We'll take a motion. Jeff, would you like to make a motion to that effect?
Sure.
Peer review done on those things?
Yes, I'll so move. I, I do feel, well, wait for a second.
Can I just ask you to actually spell out the motion to it?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I move that as a peer review on, on the hydrology, stormwater and, and traffic.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion second on the table to have, uh, peer review, an engineer do a peer review of the stormwater management plan, the traffic study, impact study and the, uh, uh, and the hydrology report, uh, for Acadian Wilderness Camp Lodge Campground.
And would that hydrology report include septic as well as, uh, drinking, potable water?
Different, it'd be different.
It'd be different. That might include that as well. I only raise this because it's been raised by the neighbors a fair amount. And I think we should try to address those issues, uh, in fairness, if those, those issues have been raised by the neighbors.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Uh, I'll amend it to the extent they include, uh, septic as well.
And I'll second, or I'll, yeah, I'll second the amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion second on the table to have an engineer do a pe, peer review of the stormwater management plan, traffic impact study, the hydrology report. of the stormwater management plan, traffic impact study, the hydrology report, and the septic plan for Acadian Wilderness Lodge Campground. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Four, nothing, okay. Okay, now, here's a question, we have a public hearing set for the 28th, right?
Yes.
We don't know whether we're going to have those reports back.
I would say, if we would make some provisions, we've set that being, but we're going to have the time to respond, not only, A, they have to get across to us, B, we need to put money in our C, they need to do the work, and then we also need an opportunity to respond. And so, if we set that timeline, I'd just like some precedent on how we may adjust that timeline if those things are not met, based on your vote a few moments ago, which may have just happened, that's all.
Really kind of make a suggestion.
You will?
September 28th is scheduled, let's keep that date and get started.
I think it's going to be a two meeting, it's going to be more than one.
Let's, let's schedule another date by Zoom in, in October, I just saw you in the court reporter, she's found this very difficult to cover, we're talking through mass, Zoom is actually easier for the court reporter and I call this one.
Does our remote participation policy allow us to do that, these things?
I don't think it's going to be an issue.
Okay. Ms. Chow?
Yes, as long as Mr. Hamilton's weighing in on timing, I, I think it makes much more sense to not start a public hearing process before the peer review is done, after it's done. As Mr. Johnson pointed out, all other parties should have an adequate opportunity to review the peer review and respond to it. So to start the public hearing process seems premature, and also, I just want to renew an objection I made in August to the scheduling of a public hearing prior to your having made a completeness determination. I believe that violates your site plan review ordinance, which says you need to make the completeness determination then schedule a public hearing. That's what we did last time, that allowed parties an adequate opportunity and due process to actually sit with the application and try to provide substantive comments to it. This has been very rushed and conflated, and I don't think it meets due process requirements. So even though I know that the board initially suggested that, that the hearing should go forward on September 28th, I would respectfully ask the board to reconsider that, to allow adequate time for the peer review and adequate time for response to that before the public hearing process begins.
Thank you. Ms. O'Connor, your opinion, please.
So the, there already was a determination that the application was complete when the 28th, when the date was set for the 28th. So the question was, you know, it was still on the table, whether that determination that the application was complete would change at tonight's hearing, which it didn't, but you didn't violate the ordinance, because you, you had already made a determination that the application was complete, and that was still, still the status.
What do you think about cabling the public hearing until we actually get the peer reviews?
The applicant would make an offer to the planning board, if we, and now he goes-
Pardon, Andy?
I'll take off my, my wife reminds me, the public health director reminds me, keep the mask on.
Keep the mask on, please, and we can still understand you.
So, on all but four items, stormwater management, traffic study, hydrology report, septic review, on all but four items, you can move forward on September 28th. We can file the peer review within the scope and the rules that the planning board has set by action on its last motion, to have a meeting on the 28th start, and then I would propose two weeks after the 28th, so that we have a full three weeks for the peer review process to start and complete, to have a pre-meeting and finish it.
Do we-
Yes, sir.
Do we start, actually have a substantive portion of the public hearing on the 28th, or just adjourn it over to the second date you recommended?
No, our, our offer is, we need to get started on the 28th, there's a number of standards, substantive review standards to be done, that aren't implicated by the peer review motion you just made, so if all but four are not implicated, start on the 28th and complete two weeks after the 28th.
I, I think that's difficult on the public, it's confusing.
I don't think it's difficult at all, you already set the 28th, so a public hearing by Zoom, you just hear-
But we, we, we've adjourned him in the past.
Hit the repeat button and, and, and schedule tonight a, a second date for the continuation of public hearing, if needed. Want to add a vote?
If I can be heard on this, it seems, there seems to be no real reason to have a September 28th hearing, other, if, if the information isn't available, and it violates your, the standards for review procedures under your ordinance. So, I think the more conservative thing to do would be to follow your ordinance, be, now that you've done a completeness determination, to, to schedule a public hearing in accordance with the, with your own regulations.
We, we had that challenging conversation about schedule last time, and worked out the process.
Okay, okay.
It's worked out fine.
Let's let the board figure it out.
I feel like it's going to go two meetings anyway, is anyone else-
I don't think, I, I agree.
I feel like it's going to be three hours discussing what, like, commercial activity is, or whatever.
Jeff, you talked about it being hard on the public to, to start the meeting on the 28th, and then adjourn, and then pick it up again on the, over whatever it is.
Only if the public raises issues within those four categories, are we going to just tell them what we're not going to talk about tonight, or, I, it just-
That's weird.
And I, I, I find it weird, I, I really think, until the peer review reports are in, everyone gets to see them, let's have the public hearing, so everyone can weigh in on all the issues, but to split them up, different issues on different nights, it's just, I don't think it's, it's a good way to run a, a public hearing.
Other than the loss of time, what's the downside to kicking it out?
To me?
To, yeah.
None.
None, yeah.
I mean, having a public hearing without the public having all the information somehow doesn't sit well.
Yeah.
It's easy to imagine what happened in April, or whenever it was that we had the last public hearing, where a lot of the comments, you know, were based on the application, they, you know, traffic's-
Right, and they're all over, they're not going to confine themselves to certain-
Yeah, and each person's going to want to, if it, you know, if they want to speak, and, and if they want to say, happen what they have to say, they want to be able to say their whole, their whole piece, and I don't think it's helpful for us to hear their feedback on the, the soil, the hydrology, if, you know, they haven't seen the peer review.
And we haven't seen it, and we haven't seen it, more importantly.
Yeah. But there's, there's, the difference that the board, because we've heard Ms. Chow a number of times speak up on, on concerns, there's three reasons-
Sophie, I just want to point that out.
There's, there's, there's three reasons I think we should consider having a meeting on the 28th of September. Number one, from the peer review standpoint, we've got reductions in heat, scope, and impact. Do you think the peer reviewer is going to have fundamental concerns with reduced traffic and reduced, and impact on hydrology? So that's the first point. The second point is, this applicant has been working hard since March, with a complete application, the start of substantive review, we went to two neighborhood meetings, we're all going to get fatigue, we want to get them. The third point is, it's, it's not a hard exercise to say, you're going to park into the October meeting, hydrology, stormwater, and, and the other two, that, that division of the House is easy, it's done all the time.
And, and the, um-
So, those are your suggestions?
Well, I, I applaud the applicant for working with the public in, in making some changes to the application, but, you know, this would all been done and, and over with last spring, if you didn't make those changes and you didn't keep making, postponing public hearings. So, you know, the fact that we might want to postpone a public hearing, I don't understand why you want to obje, object.
It feels, we want to be done by November 2nd, that's important to the existence of this project.
Okay.
Large expenditures that are put into this project, we need the chance to be able to act on it. We want a peer review and efficient review.
On November 2nd, that date is a red hearing that the planning board may not consider in determining this. Your job is to follow your procedures and follow a fair process, not to artificially expedite the process because of a moratorium, which already will, will capture this application, so there's absolutely no need for rush, because whether the planning board reaches final approval before November 2nd or afterwards, if the moratorium passes, it's still going to capture this application. So the planning board shouldn't consider the moratorium or November 2nd whatsoever, and should follow its own guidelines for an orderly process that allows due process for everyone to participate, not in a rushed fashion.
Okay, hold on, hold on, I'm going to stop both of you right now, okay? It's getting late, we all want to go home, we need to talk and make a decision. Diane, any thoughts on this?
Yeah, so, I mean, all I'm going to say is, I'm not aware of any reason why you couldn't bifurcate and have two hearings, but, you know, there's nothing I know of that would prevent you from doing that, so it's, you know, up to you what decision you make, that's really what I've got to say on that.
Jesse, do you have any thoughts? Wise man.
I, I truly feel we should have every, all the data in front of us, and we open up ourselves to the public and have the public discuss it with us, and we have all our answers in front of us from the experts, and, and we have, God, I don't want to use this word, a complete application. And, and by that meaning the peer review data is in, and they could comment on that at the same time, and we can, we can make better decisions in that way ourselves, in my opinion.
Lee, what do you think about Andy's point, though? It's actually a good one, I, I question you whether we need peer review, every, we're talking about reductions in everything, so what do we think is going to be, what do we think the peer review, I mean, we, we received the peer review on a, on a much larger application, and now we're getting peer view on something much smaller, it has less impact and everything, what do we think that that's really going to?
Well, we don't know.
We don't know.
That's the reason we're asking the question.
Yeah, I guess.
And there's, I, I don't know if we have more covered surfaces because we have more roofs, I don't, I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but we do have a lot more buildings going in than we're going in before, and that's, and, and so, yes, there's a total campsite reduction, but it's a different type of reduction, it's to structures, and what structures will impact on the property, I'm not an engineer.
If we didn't have the previous application, and we just had this one, you wouldn't be objecting to a peer review, would you?
That's, that, that was my whole point, it's a smaller, it's a, it's a, you know, there's reduced traffic, right?
Yeah. It's more the stormwater, that's my concern, I just want to make sure that it's okay, there's people downstream of there, we've heard concerns from the public.
And, and, and I'm not suggesting we don't do it.
We've already voted to do it.
Right, but I am, I mean, I, I just don't know why, we're going to have to have two meetings, we're going to have to have two public hearings anyway, I know that.
Okay, the, the only, the only concern I have about two public hearings is, okay, we know they're long tedious, tedious processes, we, at least it was the last couple times, right? Okay, so, we have, hold the public hearing on the 28th, and then we receive the peer review, and then we have another public hearing, how many of those people that weigh in at that first public hearing are, want to come back and, and-
All of them.
Yeah, all of them, exactly.
So it's not going to be a problem.
You know what that is?
Well, that's why I thought it was, it's useless to have the two, but, okay.
Well, but I think we're going to, anyway, I just think we're going to run out of time, I just think it's going to be, I think it's going to take that long for that, everyone's going to want to speak, you, you're, you're right, I mean, and it's, if it's on Zoom, you're going to have, how many people do we have, 50, 60 people? We're not going to get that done in one night.
We, we got a lot.
Originally it was 100, so, yeah.
I was trying to ask the public to, let us try to figure this out, instead of trying to, I don't know if they say-
The peanut gallery's hilarious, so what next, if you want to go the other way?
So there are two, there are two reasons why I feel like it's important to, by, by way, I think I'm leaning towards postponing, and that's, because the, the reason they have the peer review is maybe the applicant made a mistake, and I want the engineer to catch that, at this, the, the peer, the peer engineer to catch that. The other reason is that I want the public, assuming the applicant didn't make a mistake, I want the public to see the peer review, say, yeah, this looks good, like, you know, it is a reduction.
And they know that we've got our dual diligence as a planning board.
But there's nothing that prevents that from happening if we move forward to what we can do on the 28th, there's nothing that prevents that from happening in the next one.
Except if the people who speak on the 28th, to your earlier point, aren't, aren't going to be speaking, having read or heard about the peer review, and I would rather listen to them.
So you think they won't participate in the next one?
Uh-
I can hear you, Bert, what'd you say?
So you think that those people wouldn't participate in the second one?
No, I think that they would, but I would rather them only participate once, like, I mean, like, like, I want them to have all the information-
You just completely lost me on that one.
No, 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 but here's why I want them to-
You think people are going to tune in for one and not the second one because of what-
So how does Mark handle this? Does Mark open the meeting on the 28th and say, by the way, we're not done yet, because we're waiting for the reports, but we're going to address all these subjects, but these four, I, does, I don't think we look like we've done a good job by doing that.
I'm also not convinced that it's going to necessarily take two, two days, I mean, two nights, I think that it is possible that on October 12th-
But we don't give the lawyers any chance to talk, we can get done in one night.
You know, like, and everybody has the information, and we listen to 60 people, I don't know how, you know, how, you know, and it takes us a long time, but we've listened to them, I'm not sure that we will then be able to adjourn the public hearing, and then go through our sort of substantive checklist, that might not happen, that's maybe, like, we'll, might be exhaustive, but we may be able to close the public hearing in one session, if everybody has the, all the information within that session.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we schedule the public hearing, do we have to unschedule?
Well, actually, hold on a second.
What's our meeting schedule?
Since we're very scheduled, we would have to-
Adjourn that one.
Well, okay, then you open it and adjourn it, and then, or, what's the best way of handling this thorny issue here, another one?
I, I think I'm going to end it, continuing it.
Just continue it.
So maybe we should like, schedule, tonight, we should schedule a continuation of the public hearing, or, or do we even need to do that? Like, maybe we don't even need to do that, we can-
So it's been advertised?
It's been advertised, it's going to happen next Tuesday, at that moment, we open the meeting, and then close it before accepting, or, and then adjourn it before accepting public comment?
Uh, what's, what's our schedule for meetings in October?
Uh, it's the green.
The 12th and-
12th and-
Or the 13th and 27th, no, that's the wrong month.
12th and the 26th.
Jesse, do you know who the peer reviewer will be?
I, I'll contact the same one that did it before.
Yeah, and so we don't even know the schedule on that, when we get the results of that. Diane, I'm sorry, I, I didn't quite understand what your recommendation was, because this has already been scheduled and advertised, you think we should open the, have the meeting, open the public hearing, and then quickly adjourn it until, or continue it till?
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation is you can post that, that the meeting's going to be adjourned, that because it's been publicized, that the people are expecting, may not, you know, realize it's going to be adjourned, and so you should convene a meeting, and then say, you know, to say that it's being continued.
So, we don't make a motion to cancel this meeting, the public hearing on the 28th? Was there any other business that day, that day that you're aware of? Jesse?
Um, there was a request, yes, but we weren't putting it on there to, but we can be full, so yes, we probably will have-
Move her up to the 28th, and then- Move her up to the 28th, and then public hearing.
And there's also a little bit of an advantage in that we'd scheduled the meeting on the 28th to be in-person here with a Zoom option, and if we adjourn on the 28th, we could then schedule, or, you know, the continuation of the public hearing for the 12th via Zoom exclusively.
The 28th was by Zoom.
I'm sorry.
28th was by Zoom?
No.
Yes.
That, that fails.
It was higher.
According to the motions, we then, because of our remote participation policy, we then re-voted last week, last, or two weeks ago, and said it was going to be a Zoom meeting, or an in-person meeting with a Zoom option for the public.
A hybrid meeting, essentially.
I think, that's, I mean, I remember.
Check correct, okay.
And, yeah, and so it might be for the bulk, when all the, when we hear from all the public, it might be, it might work better for all of us to be on Zoom.
So it sounds like, to me, all we need to do is schedule our next meeting for the 28th. No, we don't have to do that because it's been done.
You need to schedule the public hearing for the 12th tonight.
As well, okay.
Because you wouldn't meet your deadline.
Oh, okay.
If we adjourn a meeting that's already, that's going on, we, we have to repost for the next, for whenever we're going to resume it? All right.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to that effect, if that's what we want to do? Yeah, I know. That's why we're having you do it.
Sounds like we don't have to do anything for the 28th.
No, I think we're going to have a, somebody's going to come with a different application.
We don't have to make a motion, we don't have to, like, we don't have to change anything on the 28th.
No, we'll have an agenda.
And so are we scheduling, we're like, already planning to adjourn the meeting, so we're, it's, it's like a continuation of public hearing for the 12th?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Continuation.
Yep.
All right, then I make a motion that we schedule the continuation of the public hearing at the Acadia Wilderness Lodge campground for October 12th at 5:00 PM via Zoom.
Second.
Motion second on the table to continue the public hearing on Acadia Wilderness Lodge on October 12th, 5 o'clock via Zoom, a hybrid thing, or, no, just Zoom?
All on.
All Zoom, okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Four, nothing? I'm kidding.
Just to protect your process under the new state policy, the board ought to make a finding like, the incline and delta variant transmission is the emergency condition that justifies meeting completely on Zoom, otherwise it's supposed to be in person.
Yeah, that's kind of a good point, Andy. We can make a separate motion, I believe, right?
I'm using the word impractical.
Impracticalness?
It's impractical to meet in person because of the delta variant, that's what the statute requires.
Okay, go ahead, Loz.
I make a motion that our decision to schedule the October 12th public hearing via Zoom is due to the impracability?
Impracticability, yes.
Impracticableness of meeting in person due to the delta, to the surge in COVID-19 cases.
Second. Motion second on the table, all in favor? Okay, four, zero again. Okay, we don't have to do anything about the next meeting, Jesse, because it's already been scheduled, okay?
Submental deadline, if you would please.
What's that?
Submental deadline, so it's clear. That's a good, you have.
Good point.
We decided the day before, but that's because we, we got a public hearing.
What, what have we been saying, Jesse?
So we still have a, I mean, we're still starting a public hearing on the 27th, and public, college and the public were due today, and then your college are due on 27th, that still stands, your responses to those still stands. But I think that in terms of the public, the peer review.
Peer review, I believe last time they had a week to respond.
The applicant had a week to respond?
To respond to the peer review.
In time to get it to, in our packets? Like, does it, or, I mean, like, when do we want?
I would prepare your packet on the 7th, for the 12th.
So that's, like, that's.
And we used to say the Tuesday before.
So we're going to ask the engineer?
So that would be the fifth, right?
To have their peer review done by next Tuesday, the 28th?
That's what you would be asking.
Do you think that that would be the one?
Probably not, I would find that.
Sure, some of it might, some of it, you know, I mean, like, the traffic, I.
Right.
Let's go for it, yeah, some of it tends to be no-brainers, I think, for the engineer, but, I mean, he can ask, Jesse, and see what you, you know.
So we're going to.
If it's the same engineers, they're going to have a lot of the background work done.
Right, that's true.
Okay, so submissions, what did we say?
October 5th.
October 5th?
Is the response.
Response, Lou.
That's assuming we have it by that date, or some date in time for.
I'm sorry. Whose deadline is October 5th? I'm sorry.
The hours to respond to peer review comment.
For both of you.
Makes sense, I agree.
Right, Jesse? Need a motion to that effect?
I mean, how does it be claimed?
Yeah.
I'll move the, any responses by parties to the peer review reports be filed no later than 5:00 PM on October 5th. 4:00.
Jesse, you're not working off?
Hey, I'm working, mate, you can work, leave.
Okay, I'll second that. All, oh, hold on, motion is second on the table, all responses to the peer review be into the town office to Jesse by 4:00 PM on October 5th. All in favor? Unanimous, or four, zero, sorry. I should say unanimous. Okay, take a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, can I ask a housekeeping question? The applicant said that they, Mr. Johnson would provide something in writing as to which state agencies have been contacted for which permits and the status of that, and I think that was going to be provided on the 27th, when there wasn't, deadline of the 27th, so can I ask when that will be provided by the applicant?
By October 5th?
October 5th.
I don't remember a motion to that effect.
So any, any of the deadlines that are due by October 5th or 4:00?
We should probably do.
On anything.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not sure, I don't know, I feel like the applicant's response to public comment that was submitted today, I feel like the motion that we made last time, that those responses are due on the 27th of September.
That was too, oh, go ahead.
It seemed like that still stands, and that the motion we just made is about response to the peer review.
Right, but, but the challenge is, we were making a response by the 27th, assuming that there was going to be a public hearing on the 28th, so people would have our comments, and we're not doing that now, so we don't see the merits in, in, you know, the few days, and frankly, I've got a boatload of work to get done, I don't know, great, so if it happens, I would be really appreciative.
All right, I'm fine with that, but then we should make a motion to change that, because I think that, I make a motion.
Make it a separate motion.
Yep, I make a motion that we ask the applicant to respond to any comments that have been submitted by the public by October, the response should come in by October 5th.
Wait, I don't think that's what Ms. Towns asked me for.
Just friendly suggestion for an amendment, I hear October 5th at 4:00 PM is a deadline for anyone to submit anything, including peer review, but it doesn't have to be limited to peer review. This is prior to the public hearing on the 12th, so if Mr. Johnson wants to do his, his summary of who he's contacted, or state agencies, that's due the 5th, the peer review comments are due the 5th.
Right, so we've already talked about the peer review, but we have, in our minutes from last meeting, we said explicitly that the applicant will respond to public comments that were issued today by September 27th. But I think that we should change that to say that the applicant should respond to public comments by October 25th, by October 5th. Is that, am I missing something, Ms. Towns?
I was just suggesting that it's more global, it's not just the applicant, that, that any response, in other words, I don't want to be limited.
All submissions from any parties are due.
Submissions from any parties, we want anything to do with this application, not limited to peer review comment.
Okay, make the motion.
Okay, although.
Any submissions by their applicant or respondent on this matter shall be due by October 4:00 PM on October 5th.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Okay, second.
Second very often.
Any, any discussion? Hey, I want to go home, I'm hungry.
I haven't had dinner, yeah, go home. Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Okay, aye. So any submissions coming, they should be by October 5th, 4:00 PM. Okay, motion to adjourn.
No, that worries.
So, Lou. I'll second that.
Motion is second on the table, adjourn, all in favor? Okay.
Yeah, 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 it is overtime.